Mr. Hidalgo is going to be joining us a little late. Today's meeting is to go over schools of choice revisions and the implementation of administrative rule and a new policies and procedure handbook. And it's going to be relatively informal, kind of like a workshop. And Ms. Ozzy is going to be going over the administrative rule changes. And then Mr. Broussard, myself, and Ms. Morris will be talking about it. And we'll ask for public comment and staff comment along the way. So, let's get started.
Good afternoon. I have an agenda set up. There's a method to the agenda. There are some items in the beginning that we've discussed several times that I'd like us to kind of finalize where, what the direction of the board is for this.
Okay, and so fellow board members, I think our goal today will be to leave with a motion that we recommend to the full board the implementation of the administrative rule and the associated handbook. And we probably along the way will discuss a policy revision to the board once we get to that point. But I think, so that we all know what we're talking about today, our goal is to get through these two documents, the revisions that take effect because of the documents, and then go to the board with a recommendation that we have reviewed this, discussed this, and that we think this is the path forward for these specific items.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the name change. We had gone through several name change options. I'd like to propose that we change the name from schools of choice to magnet academies. The second item is the removal of the A and the B list and other demographic questions from the application. The third item is change from a numbered waitlist system to a random waitlist pool. So far, I'd like to address those three.
So you want to address those three, and then we'll talk about those?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to know your thoughts based on all of our conversations and meetings in the past, where you stand on that in order to take it to the next.
On the magnet academies, I saw that you also had, I just have to find where you referred to it, you had different levels.
The magnet matrix?
Yeah, where's that at?
That's towards the end of your packet.
Mm-hmm.
Right now.
So?
Everything public. The first document is the creating a magnet academy design and development specifications. And then one following that is a magnet matrix. It says magnet academy matrix, standards to differentiate between an academy, magnet academy, and academy of excellence. So it, you know, it refers and talks about what makes an academy a magnet academy, besides just the definition. And then it talks about the different types of academy status. So you have academy, provisional magnet academy, magnet academy, and magnet academy of excellence. That's how you would differentiate between them.
I thought that there was some discussion on having an accredited program before you met.
Correct.
So which one would that be?
So, a magnet academy would be accredited. A magnet academy of excellence would be an accredited and certified magnet academy of excellence. So, the Department of Education recognizes, like we talked about before, that all of our academies in a sense are magnet academies. What sets them apart, what the next level of that is getting it certified as an actual magnet academy. So we do that through a process, through Magnet Schools of America, working with the Department of Education. And there's a certification process that we could begin, you know, whenever we like, you know, in the next month or so even. This different type of academy status is something almost internal. So, a regular academy could be any school that decides for their in-zone students they want to have a cool academy type of environment. The provisional magnet academy is for the existing academies that we have in our schools of choice academies. So, I've done an evaluation on the academies to see where they stand. I believe I've sent you the information for their curriculum and their content and what they, what's involved in their academy curriculum program. So, I would look at those and see which ones that are almost there and work on getting them to that magnet academy or magnet academy of excellence status. I would look at the ones that are, you know, like STEM, Health Careers Academy, the ones that already have an existence, those higher standards to begin with, that we're trying to streamline and uniform the other ones to. So, those would be an easy approach to get to magnet academy of excellence status and get those certified nationally.
Okay, and I see your two paragraphs below talk about the magnet academies.
Correct.
I don't see anywhere on this document, unless I'm not seeing it, where you talk about being accredited.
I didn't necessarily put it in there. It's part of being a magnet academy eventually is part, that encompasses that. So, the process of doing that is going through that national certification.
Yeah, and I guess that's my, my point is, you either have it or you don't.
Right.
Right? You either are accredited or you're not.
Correct.
And you're either accredited as, if you're not accredited, I understand, we internally call it a provisional magnet academy.
Correct.
Because it says that we are, we believe we're there, we're trying to be there, but we're not there yet.
Mm-hmm.
Then, when we become accredited, it gives us more street credibility, or whatever you want to call it.
Correct.
That, hey, we have been accredited as a magnet academy body, magnetic, I'm sorry, magnet academies.
The MSA.
The MSA. And in the, so, I believe your document needs to say something about the delineation between provisional and magnet.
In terms of the certification process?
Is certification, from whoever we decide needs to be the certifier. Maybe there's more than one, but.
Okay.
I think that makes us much more competitive, too, when people are looking at our schools. It gives us a third party, basically, it's like third-party verification, that we're meeting some standard. Now, the academy of excellence, from looking at this, it just says it's, the only delineation is it also has grants?
Which one are you looking at?
I'm at your magnet academy matrix.
The magnet academy of excellence is a magnet academy that's funded by both board and active grants, which means that the magnet, the program itself, so, I'm going to use STEM as an example. STEM is constantly working on grants, constantly getting grants, constantly looking at their programming and their development and their core concepts of STEM curriculum.
But that's, so what I asked is, grants specifically are the delineation, like the difference?
For an excellence?
Right.
Correct.
So they're accredited.
For internal purposes, yes.
Okay, do we think that's enough? Is that enough of a delineation to say that's why you're excellent?
I believe so. Because to reach magnet academy of excellence status, you already have to reach all the other standards.
Okay.
So internally, if you're a magnet academy of excellence, you've already gone through the national certification process, you've already gotten your awards, there are some blue ribbon awards, there's other statuses that you have on there. So in order to reach that, you have to do certain things. So once you're at that internally, one of the things that I personally would like to look at is, if you're a magnet academy of excellence, are you working towards funding your program in other ways as opposed to relying on the board or the district to do it? Because that shows initiative, and it shows purpose and direction. So, if you want your program to constantly grow, you're going to constantly look for ways of finding the funds to facilitate that without relying all the time on board funds.
My other question is about the academy. I'm not, I'm not sold on why we need to establish an academy that is not either a provisional magnet or magnet or academy of excellence. Why, why confuse the mix or dilute, right, the power of the name? Why dilute the power of the name magnet academy with, oh, I'm an academy?
Right.
And why confuse people?
So, the academy has nothing to do with our schools of choice program for conversation purposes. So, the academy is, we're always talking about development, we're always talking about pathways, we're always talking about new programs that we can put somewhere else. And so, in part of my research and looking at what other districts do, what they do is they implement a process and a strategy where there's a ready-made packet for everyone. It shows a checklist of what it entails to be an academy program, from entry requirements to extracurricular activities, to all kinds of different programming that you can do. So, you would have a checklist and you would have this packet together. If any school says, hey, you know, I really want arts at my school, and they've been really asking for it, then you say, okay, here's what it takes to be a magnet academy. Here's what we look for, this is what's expected. Can you, can you do that on your own? And if you can do that on your own for a year, and I could help support that, but if you can do that on your own, if you can figure out how to manage that for your in-zone students with your own school funds, then you can, then when the board looks at growing the programs and looking at different places, you have a school that's already committed and invested enough to want to grow to get to that level. So it's kind of like the stepping stone to become an academy in the future.
And of the four, which ones become, I think I know the answer, but which ones become opportunities for kids to attend out of zone?
Once they hit magnet academy or provisional magnet academy.
To provisional.
I'm hoping that, the provisional should end by the next year, because I'm hoping to get all the academies to be 100% functioning the way that some of the other, you know, the other ones function. And so, with the administrative rule and the handbook and all the other things that you guys have been asking for to be looked at, I'm very confident that all these academies are going to be at that level of magnet academy status. So the provisional is just for, is a temporary kind of status right now, because not all of our academies right now, if I went to apply for certification, would, in reality, become certified to be a magnet academy.
All right. My only hesitation is having the academy name associated with a budding program. I understand the need to have a budding program that is developing into provisional, right? But I don't necessarily think we should associate the name with it yet.
Sure.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's up to the rest of the board to talk about, but I think having three categories of magnet are enough.
Okay.
But I'll open that up to, for discussion.
Yeah, I support your suggestion. I think that we need to keep it as streamlined as possible and show a progression through the higher levels or higher credentialing that each magnet academy would have.
I don't know if the name change is that important versus the program that is being offered. You know, having a school of choice means one thing, and it's one person's mind, and magnet academy means, I guess, has something more powerful meaning, but I don't know if we want to name all of the programs that we have as far as a magnet academy. But I, you know, I understand the power of the magnet academy and versus the school of choice, does make a difference, does send a different message. But we haven't completed that full circle yet, that full circle yet to determine if that changes now or later.
All right, so what we'll do is?
Wait for?
I'll make a motion, after we talk about these three, I'll make a motion to move forward with whatever revisions. I'll try to keep track of everything.
So, the removal on A and B list and demographic questions from the applications, and then the change from numbered waitlist to random waitlist pool, if we could.
So talk about the removal of A and B list and demographic questions.
The A and the B list started during the DSEG order. It was, A was white, B was black, and then over time it became A was non-free and reduced, and B was free and reduced. So it went from race to socioeconomic status. I believe that it's hindering the program, the application process. I don't believe that it's necessary anymore where we are. And then as well, the demographic questions that fall into it, there shouldn't be a requirement as in, in terms of it being an asterisk on the application, for a student to pick what race they are, or what their socioeconomic status is, if it's going to be a true random system of selection. Because it kind of takes away from that.
I agree.
To determine that A, B list on the application, does it have race and income?
Yes.
It does?
The computer software is designed to pull from those demographic questions that are asterisked, because those are fields and sections of that. So when a software pulls something and is a required field, it somehow plays into how the system generates the response. I'm trying to say it as less tech as I possibly can.
But my thing is, if I'm filling, not me, if someone is filling the application for something free versus something that you can not pay for, then I would, someone would check the free and reduced lunch versus paying for it without knowing, without even thinking about if that questionnaire is going to be checked afterwards. So that's why I ask if that list has race and income on it, to determine what race that applicant is and how much the money, maybe 20,000, 10,000, or 100,000.
It doesn't differentiate dollar amount. It's a very simple question that asks, do you qualify for any of the following? And then it has TNF, a tan, a SNAP, free and reduced lunch, federal assistance programs, chip, like several different things, and it provides a link to go into a government website that explains it all, if that answers your question. But the actual?
It answers what I answered it. Yes. So what I'm, what I'm getting at is that the A and B list is not exactly what we look at it to be as far as one race versus the other, because we looked at the list of names, and if, I guess we pull up the address, we see some of the ones, most of the ones on the B list, it's not who we have in mind, when the original list was created.
Mm-hmm.
So I, you know, saying all of that, I would, I would agree with removing the A and B list.
Okay.
Right, we no longer have the purpose for which that was originally intended.
Correct.
Desegregation. And then what percentage of our students are free and reduced lunch now?
Right now, probably 60 or over.
Right, so it's really a meaningless demographic anyway, because of the high percentage in our parish, so.
Part of my concern with it is, is it, from looking at some of the numbers of the, you know, the makeup of some of those choice schools, it's not working.
No.
I mean, it's certainly not working. I mean, yeah, so, no, I don't think they need to be there anymore.
Okay. Is that something to?
So in the next, just go ahead and talk about the change from numbered.
The numbered waitlist versus the random waitlist pool. Other districts have also adopted a random waitlist pool, not numbered. It, there's a lot of reasons not to have the numbered waitlist pool. One of the biggest ones is if a student applies, if a parent applies to a program, and they've applied to two programs, so we have two choices that they can apply to, right? They're number six on one and number 13 on the other, they're going to keep waiting and waiting and waiting, they're taking space from somebody else. So our process and our time, that's one aspect of it. The other thing is that if it's a true lottery, again, in the sense of it's random selection, then a random waitlist pool is the next fair way to do it, because when the lottery happens, you have a random waitlist pool, and then the system randomly generates the next one, two, three, four, five down the road, down the line. So if you random, the, sorry, the software is designed to randomly pull another random selection out of a waitlist pool, you don't need it numbered.
Agree.
So explain to me briefly the software that we have, as far as how the data is entered, and once it's entered, does someone push a button and it shoots out the responses, or is there some opportunity, and I assume there is, for human input, where either they're rearranging, or readjusting, or renumbering, or reordering, or, I mean, what, just tell me a little bit about our software.
Application, so a parent fills out an application, or an application is submitted, and then you, it's time to have a lottery. So, there is a feature in the application in the management software, that you press the button and the lottery happens. Once the lottery happens, you can manually, it's set up to manually be able to move those and adjust those, like for example, on the waitlist. There have been times where some error happened, a technical error, user error, human error, and so we've had to manually go back in there and adjust that waitlist and that numbered waitlist, and then goes back to my concerns about having a numbered waitlist. If you have 10 people on a waitlist and something happened, human error, completely error, something happens to waitlist number eight, well, waitlist number eight is removed, now you have somebody else in their place. So now I have to manually go and add them back in as a waitlist number eight, because you realize there was an error and you have to fix it, and then it just messes everything up. So, yes, you can manually adjust elements of the application, especially after the lottery.
And is it required that all of the applications are online?
Yes.
All right, so what do we do to accommodate those children who live in our poorest or most impoverished communities? Do we make sure they have access to a computer or to some type of technology that would allow them the same opportunity to apply to these programs?
Sure, so, anyone is welcome to come to the schools of choice office to complete an application. And one of the things that I looked at implementing in the past year was, if somebody can't for any reason fill out a computer application, they're welcome to come into the schools of choice office and print, we print out a paper application, they fill out the paper application, we have their signature on file, we upload that into, we archive that and scan it in, and then we can then go manually enter their application into the system and have that paper copy as a trail.
Is there a reason it can't be done at school? Like have school of choice day where kids sign up in class?
I don't know if that's ever been an idea. I'm sure certainly they can do that.
Is there any reason we couldn't do that?
It seems at a minimum we should be able to provide a computer at each school site that would be available to those parents who, for whatever reason, don't have transportation and whatnot.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but that's at your school. What about the kids who are at West Side? Do you go to West Side and say, here's a computer, you can apply for my program? Right.
They, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
They can do it on any computer. They can do it from their home. They can do it from the school.
Right, I'm concerned about the ones who don't have the computer access at home, or may not have the transportation to get here, so.
Paul Frenzy is, was another site where they were able to do online applications, but they can do them at any school as well.
All right, and we let them know?
Library.
We give them sufficient notice that that's available? Okay.
So I guess I didn't, I think now that we're near a point where we can vote on these three things, is we can either entertain a motion, or I'll make a motion for these three things, just to add some clarity, and then we can open it up. I mean, we've had an opportunity to speak, so then we can open it up for public comment or staff comment, and then move from there. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for the three items that we discussed, and this is going to be relatively long, that we accept the recommendations for the name change, the removal of the A and B list, and demographic questions from application, and the change from numbered waitlist to random waitpool list, waitlist pool, with the exception of removing the academy designation under the types of academy status.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. And if you guys are willing, you want to do voice votes, just to keep things moving? All right. I guess I can call for the vote then, right? All right, well, yes, I do, so now there's a motion on the floor, and the motion, just to clarify, was to accept those three recommendations, with the exception of removing the academy status designation of the four types of designation. So now if anybody wants to speak on those specific items, and then after we move forward with that, we'll go ahead, and just please come up to the microphone. And briefly, I'm going to update Mr. Hidalgo. So Mr. Hidalgo, we've talked about, there's an agenda item, there's an agenda, we talked about a recommended name change, the removal of the A and B list, and demographic questions from applications, and the change from numbered waitlist to random waitlist pool. And I know you're familiar with these items, because we've had several meetings on the issues, so, and I think you heard the motion as well.
I did.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I'm Michelle Haj Broussard, and I had a few questions or some comments. The first was about accreditation. We have in Louisiana an accreditation program for immersion programs that are very immersion specific. So I'm not sure, just like with other things that you, when you have specialized schools, that you might not want to go with one huge, general, applies to everybody, that might not give specific what you need for that program. So maybe see if they have a STEM specific, I know there's an immersion specific.
That's a great, yeah, great idea.
So that might be a better idea than across the board. They have immersion specific?
Yes.
The accreditation process through MSA? Okay, all right. The second thing I had, and question about, was you talked about how removing the A and the B. The issue with randomness is that randomness depends on who is going into the pool, right? So if you have, if you're putting something into a bag, and you have four red and four blue, then you're going to get a balance, or chances are, you're going to get a balance when you pull out randomly. But if you go into a bag and you have nine red and two blue, even randomly, you're going to get more red. So my question with this is, if you're going completely random, how are you going to make sure we're not going to get back in trouble in terms of desegregation, if you don't have, the pool at the beginning is not the same? And this is what I'm saying, like random doesn't mean you're going to come out with even, obviously, it depends on that pool. So while you're saying right now it's 60/40, what I would like to know is, what was the pool originally? Because I'm assuming that that's what you're going to need to know, because if you go in and you have 80% paid lunches, people coming into your pool, and you're picking randomly from that, that means that probably randomly, if you're doing it randomly, then 80% of your kids are going to be paid lunch. So I just, I worry about that.
Good point. And I can tell you that, I mean, from the demographics I've been able to see, whatever we're doing now is not working to make the, not all of them, but a lot of our schools of choice statistically similar to the demographic in the parish.
Right.
And not necessarily the way I expected it to be. So, one solution is remove all identifying factors, so that race or demographics cannot be a factor. And the second thing I think is our job, and our job, is to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and providing the opportunity for all kids, encouraging all kids from all schools to apply. And that's, goes back to what Ms. Morris asked, are we recruiting from our?
Which I thought was a great question.
Right, are we recruiting, are we actively recruiting from our impoverished areas as we are in our wealthy areas? Are we? And, and that's something that, if we can figure out how to put checks and balances in down the road, certainly I think we're all for that.
Yeah, I would, I would look afterwards, if you do this, and you look at the random, to come back out, put the demographics back in and see what happened, because you might need to rework it.
Right.
And, I was just going to say, that we are closely examining the demographics as they currently exist at the various schools of choice, so that we can kind of track some patterns and see what we need to do to make sure that demographics aren't being heavily focused on, on either side of the continuum.
All right, if there's no more comments on these three items, I'm going to call for a voice vote, and I'll start with, we'll start, Mr., I'm a yes.
Yes.
So we have four ayes or four yeses for the first three items. All right, so next, how many do you want to group together?
Um.
Three more?
We can group the priority together, and I'm going to add one in this agenda that was, it was added into the administrative rule and the. rule and the handbook draft, but I forgot to add it to this agenda. It discusses the proximity. So the first type of sibling priority would apply in the following scenarios, I'm sorry. The first type of priority is sibling, and it would apply to the following scenarios. Pre-K and kindergarten entry with existing sibling within two grade levels, or one grade level, kindergarten new app, for example, kindergarten is a new applicant with an existing sibling entering first grade. The second, the second part to that is siblings with the same birth date applying for any grade levels. So that's K through 12, or pre-K through 12. The next type is an experience priority. So it's for applicants with at least three years of experience in the academy program they're applying for. So for example, if a student wants to apply to LJ Alamo's Art Academy program, and they haven't been to J. Wallace James to get that art pathway priority. If they've been somewhere else, in some, in whatever capacity, through private lessons, or at the school, several of our other schools offer music, if they want to apply to LJ Alamo, and they've had three years of experience with that art, then they would also receive a priority. And then the final one is proximity priority. And it applies to students, currently it apply, it currently, it would apply to students in those 100% academy sites. I added STEM on there, but I don't know, I think STEM was one of those, that was a unique situation that we might consider a little bit differently. But Eleo Judis, for example, Eleo Judis resides within the district of West Side. So the students that apply to Eleo Judis, that also are zoned to West Side, would get a proximity priority. So they would be able to get in, to get that priority ta, stick, tag. The students in the J. Wallace James area, those students are naturally zoned to, I believe, SJ Montgomery, and there's another one, I think it's split right in, in the middle. So those students would get a proximity priority. And so they would, they would be able to get into the school that way as well. So the, the theory behind that is, and it's what a lot of districts, there's two districts in Florida doing it, there's a district in Texas doing it, there's one in California, Southern California, that's doing that. And it's proven to be really successful, in getting those other students that are neighborhood kids in there. So those are the three types of priorities that we're looking at. Four, I'm sorry, four. Oh, pathway priority, of course, and pathway priority, the same, this, it would work exactly the same way, we would just look at how we can, over, in the future, how we can look at adjusting some of the pathways. But the, the proposal from the last time was to remove STEM as a pathway from J. Wallace to STEM.
Okay, I think we're gonna talk about pathways at a later meeting, maybe. But a couple of questions on these priorities. One, on your agenda, under experience, it says at least three years of experience in the academy program, in both the administrative rule and handbook, it says two.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So we'll just need to, well, and the board can discuss what they think is appropriate for that. And then the proximity priority, basically, that would address those kids that, for example, live across the street from J. Wallace James, but they're zoned to go someplace else. So this would give them, if they choose to apply, and if they meet all the other qualifications.
Correct.
Then it kinda gives them a little bump up, because of where they're living, close to the school.
Correct, so, so any priority, to tag that student, that applicant as a priority, they would still have to meet all the other criterias, they would still have to meet their audition. So the priority status is the last thing that's tagged on to an application, once they met everything else. So it, it still keeps it fair, it just says, now we have these levels of priority, once you've all met the same standards, the same expectations, the same entry criteria.
Alright, and again, this is something that's gonna be discussed probably at a later meeting, but if we look at LJ Alamo, for example, and decide to make it 100% School of Choice, this proximity priority would take care of those kids that are still within the current zone.
Correct.
They could still choose, or they could go to their zone school, which would be Edgar Martin, or wherever.
Correct.
Okay.
How do, explain to me how the priority works? For example, this example, and again, totally hypothetical, Ms. Gardner, but totally hypothetical, but if there were only 500 spots in Alamo, and if 500 kids in the neighborhood said, I wanna go to Alamo, that they would get those before anybody else? Is that how it works? Or does that just a factor in some sort of algorithm that a computer spits out?
It's just a factor in the algorithm. As a matter of fact, you can determine which priority, type of priority is first, second, third, you can rank those two as well.
So of the three, 'cause there are sibling, experience, and pathway, proximity isn't...
That, that's the one I forgot to add to the agenda, 'cause I...
Proximity. And proximity is the one regarding proximity, zones, if you lived in the zoned area.
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna equally, I mean, is that a discussion that needs to happen? Are we gonna equally weight them? How do we keep it from getting manipulated in the future?
Once you set the priority ranks, there's no way to manipulate it. Because the system will automatically pull from that ranking system. So for example, let's take Alamo again. We have a student who has applied for a piano, they have passed the piano, they were not in LJ, I'm sorry, they were at J. Wallace James, so they get pathway priority. That student happens to also live within the LJ Alamo zone, so they would get proximity priority. That student happens to have a brother or a sister that's in the seventh grade, so they're coming into the sixth grade, so they would get a sibling, well, I'm sorry, that applies to kindergarten, I'm sorry, that doesn't work. So they would have those two priorities. You could rank those to say, okay, pathway priority would rank first, because that's only fair. They've, they've gone through the process in elementary school, and they wanna go through the process in middle school. So pathway priority. Then what's your next level? Proximity. So you wanna be able to reach all those students around there. And then you can look at the experience priority. Then, once you've hit all the ones, to be fair, once the students have, you've, you've picked the ones that have gone through the process for five years at Wallace, you've picked the ones that are immediately in the area, then you look at their experience. Is there space available? Okay, yes, we have 30 seats available, and we have 100 kids that have had experience in piano for three years. So then it'll pick 30 of those random students that have been in piano for three years.
Do we need to rank them? And I'm looking at you guys.
Do we need to write, what?
Do we need to rank these, or?
Well, I'm not sure that we need to rank them at this particular meeting. I think we need to determine whether we want these to be priorities, all four, if we wanna pick particular ones. And then, once we get through the, the continued process with guidelines and everything else, then we can come back and look, 'cause I think we're gonna be talking about changing some pathways potentially. And so we may have to come back to that, to rank, to prioritize the priorities, to see what's gonna work best. That would be my suggestion.
My, my question is priority. If we, if we're going to give priority to the neighboring students, I see we've got the second grade sibling within the second grade, kindergarten to second grade. What happens if, for instance, we've got 500, we get two, 300, got 300 seats in kindergarten? That's no priority for a kindergarten student to enter, to enter J. Wallace James, or Judis, or what, that's no, so if the neighboring kids fill that up, then what happens to the, to the rest of them? If priority is given to the neighboring, for the surrounding students?
I guess in a situation of, that's a, that's a good question. For kindergarten, that have not had any other kind of path, you mean, for a student who has no other priority status?
Nothing, it's kindergarten, you need nothing, nothing to qualify, 'cause you have not been anyplace else, with just an application process. And I live across the street, or all 200 of them live across the street.
I can find out from the develop, what was that?
Wouldn't proximity?
Proximity.
Fall in, so they would have one priority?
They would have that one priority. What I can do is, I can get with the developer and see if they can, they can, is if there's a system to weigh that priority, to say, okay, we only want 50% of this waitpool to be, I mean, 50% of this applicant pool to be proximity.
To prioritize.
So right, so I think your question, Mr. Bussard, is, what if the kid that live in the proximity take all the seats?
Take all of it.
Right? So we could, that's another discussion we could have, is if we're gonna limit it by number or percentage, that 25% of the seats are, would be open, or no more than, would be open to the proximity priority, and then otherwise, they go into the same pool with everybody else. I mean, but that's a decision we could make.
Why don't we vote today on the, on the priorities, and then save the, after you talk to the developer?
Mm-hmm.
And study it a little more, come back during the pathways meeting later this month.
Okay.
And talk to us about how that algorithm works, how it's recommended to us to implement the priorities.
And one other, Ms. Can, one, one other question. We, we have kindergarten entering with existing sibling within second grade. We changed, is it, is it more important to go to the third grade? 'Cause fourth grade is a whole different, it's a whole different scenario. Why, why choose second grade instead of third grade?
No, within two grade levels, or within one grade, it was, I think it was one grade level, or two.
Right, it's actually more limited, Mr. Bussard. It's if you have a applicant going into pre-K, and they have a sibling one year ahead in kindergarten, that would be a sibling priority. If you have a kindergartner going in, and they have a sibling going into first grade, that would be a sibling priority, but that would be it. And then for multiples, twins, triplets, quads, or whatever, they get a priority.
But they wouldn't get a priority if they're coming into kindergarten, and they have a third grade sibling, or a fourth grade sibling, or second grade?
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we accept the priority recommendations of sibling, experience, pathway, and proximity.
We need to clarify on the experience, whether we want that to be three years or two years. It says two years in the guidelines, and the...
Right.
I apologize for that, mix up on that.
Which one is it? Which, are you recommending the two years with, on the administrative rule?
I guess at this, yeah.
Two years.
Two years.
Okay, so we'll have that, and just to clarify, the experience, it should be two, as written on the current administrative rule.
And I'll second.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second, so I'll open it up to public comment.
Me and LaMaire, principal of Eleo Judis Elementary School, and Scott, who is 100% lottery, random, as y'all talked about earlier. If you are pulling proximity, I have concerns about that. Mainly because earlier, we were talking about wanting to be random, and if we go proximity, with a school the size of our population, you're gonna lose the randomness to that. In addition, West Side Elementary now has less than 300 children, sensory zoning, so you know, that would shut down, potentially, could shut down, eliminate another school, or reduce their numbers even well, even more so, meaning it's not cost-effective to run a school that small, you know, of, let's say, 100 of those 300, it's not even 300 kids, but let's say 100 or so come, and then you're running a school of 200 children in the same, you know, within a couple of blocks of a school that has, you know, what we have. So again, just concerns about that. And if the point was earlier to be random, then you don't wanna lock in with the proximity. We, we have students at our school that come from every school in the district, and I, I understand that there are transportation woes and concerns with that, and wanting to eliminate buses, and issues of, of things of that nature. We have four buses that do satellite stops for our schools. On average, in the morning, we have 185 cars that come through our car rider line. So our parents are not a burden for transportation, because they are, most of them transporting their own children. And when I say 185 cars, it does not equate to 185 children, because we do have siblings, we do have neighbors, we have one, literally one car that picks up three families at our school. So I have concerns about that as well. You know, it's not, we're not a burden to transportation, as maybe other schools might be. The other thing is, the bulk of our children are families, and so I have concerns about limiting that to a one year. It sounds basically like if it's a K1, we don't have pre-K, so if you're doing a K1 sibling priority, I have concerns about that as, as well. And I really have concerns about the fact that our parents are gonna be blindsided by this. You know, I know this meeting was offered, and it was public, and it was put on the news. In fact, I found out about it first, because a parent of mine called and said, what's that meeting going on about? And so that's how I found out originally about this meeting, and she said, why is it at 2 o'clock? You know, we work. So again, I feel like we really need to let our parents know, and, and I don't want them to be blindsided by any changes that are made, be it to sibling priority, or any of those things. So those are just some of the concerns that I have about it.
Well, I wanna make sure we address, so you mentioned sibling priority and proximity priority is your chief issues.
Well, experience doesn't factor in for us.
Right, okay.
So I don't have a dog in the experience fight, if you understand what I'm saying by that.
Sibling, right. So on a couple of things, on the public notice, there's not much more we can do. We've been talking about Schools of Choice since March, and I agree, as much, we had the news here, but unfortunately, they left. But hopefully, they're paying attention. And hold on, let me, let me finish. We've been talking about Schools of Choice since March, it is an issue, we are gonna continue to talk about it, this is probably our second or third committee meeting. This is, there's a lot, I mean, obviously, there's a lot to this, and we're trying to dig through it as much as we can, and get to a point where we can give something to the board that is somewhat coherent, that we can go through logically, and get done in a typical board meeting, which, you know, can last from an hour to six hours. So there will be more opportunity, wherever we get to, whether this board, I mean, this committee recommends to the full board, so there'll be a lot of opportunity. And I will, hopefully, if Amanda or anybody else in the news is watching, please make sure that you guys publicize the fact that we are making, that we are making changes to Schools of Choice. If there's any doubt in anybody's mind, there are changes being made to Schools of Choice. Just wanna make sure that we're clear on that. I think on the sibling priority, I mean, we can talk about that more. I think there has to be a limit to it somewhat. I definitely think it's helpful that we offer a sibling priority. My biggest concern, though, and I do wanna get your opinion on this, is, you mentioned, you know, your, your school specifically is 100% lottery, but we have this, we have this dilemma, right, in your zone, that we have a school that's half-empty, and now, soon to be rebuilt, or rebuilt school, that's half-empty, but we have your school busting at the seams, and as people also charged with managing facility utilization, right? How do we justify having a school that's, is as large as yours, next to a school that has half, if, if not less than half, the student body, and, and not do something about that? And I would be interested in hearing your recommendations on how do we, how do we remedy that in this type of scenario? 'Cause that is, I mean, your school specifically is one where we're looking at West Side, and we have this chart, we have this chart that shows permanent classroom capacity, and when we look at the chart, and we say, well, we have classrooms here, but we're busting out of the seams here, how do we address that? So I'd really love to hear that, if you have any opinions on that.
Part of, I think part of the charm, and I am going to use the word charm, I know it's, it's an educational setting, and, but I think part of the charm of Eleo Judis is, is our little dilapidated facility, with the beautiful, enormous named oak tree in the front of it. That is part of the draw. People come and say, what an adorable school, you know? So I don't know, you know, that, that facility part of it, you know, could we replicate, go somewhere else, move everything? That I don't know. I mean, that's a question I don't, I don't really know the answer to. We make it work with what we have. Fortunately, all of you voted to fund a library for us, which is, you know, we'll be moving in in the next three weeks there. So, you know, so fortunately, we did have that little bit of elbow room that we could, you could put there. You know, ideally, with the tax that was voted down, I was really hopeful, we were one of the schools that were on that list, and I was very hopeful that we would, that would pass, and that we would get a wing where our permanents are, and, and we could increase our capacity at that point as well. None of that occurred. None of that occurred, and so, um, you know, uh, the answer to that, I don't, you know, I really can't, I guess I'm not in a position to give you, uh, you know, much...
Yeah, and one of the ideas, uh, and again, this is, the, the intent of these meetings is so that we can have open discussion and try to get as many ideas out there as we can. One of the ideas that we had, uh, talked about, um, was, could your program, um, if, if you, I don't know, kinda like what we're doing with the, the medical program, could it be replicated at, at Westside? Is there that much demand, um, that your program could be replicated at Westside and under, but without replicating the administrative burden to that? You know, for instance, could you run, or, I'm not exactly sure how you run the program specifically outside of running the school, but could your program director run a successful program at two campuses within close proximity of each other, so that they're still under...
I'm looking at our program director.
And I don't know, and again, this is...
Not that I wanna throw her under the bus.
This goes back to, um, the idea with the health academies, if we have one health academy at multiple campuses. So again, I, feel free to comment or not, you don't have to, I know it's...
Yeah, um, I, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be honest and tell you that, uh, I don't know how much of the draw for our school, and, and I'm just, I pride myself on being honest, so I'm gonna give you an honest statement. I don't know how much of the draw of our school is the school itself and the, and the program that's run there. I don't know which, which is which with parents. You know, I think one becomes the other, and the, and vice versa, you know?
Right, I, I agree, I think mostly it's your program, I mean, you have a tremendously successful program, and I think that's why people want to...
And we don't want to break what we have.
Right.
And that's our true, very true concern, is that we, we feel at LEO JUDESE, we have something that works. Why mess with something that works?
But is it the students entering the program, or is it the program?
We get the same kids that, we had three kindergarten students repeat last year, because they, uh, they came to us not ready, we worked with them really, really hard, did everything that we could, the end of the year, they were ready for kindergarten.
That's right.
We get the same exact kids that everybody else gets. It's not let, "Oh, it's a lottery, so you're getting the cream of the crop." That's not the case at all. And as it currently stands, we accept children all the way up through fifth grade. Sometimes, we get that, that diamond in the rough, and it's like, "Oh, just a little bit, and this child's rolling." Other times...
But I guess that's my point. My point is, I don't think anybody has, has proposed anything that would change your program. All we're changing is the priorities for children going into your program. So if, in your argument, you're taking from across the board, cream of the crop, or not cream of the crop, just any random student, right?
Yes, any random child.
Any random student, then, in theory, you should be able to take any random student, as you mentioned, and, so I don't...
Sure.
I understand the fear, right? Any change, any change, people get scared.
And, and listen, it's been said that I'm afraid of change, and that's not true.
Right.
So I wanna say that.
I am.
That's not true. Now, for the record, Mia Lemare is not afraid of change.
But I have confidence that you could take any student and put him through a very successful program, because you have.
Yes, and we have outstanding teachers. We also have outstanding parents and outstanding families. So, a lot of that, you know, we have, it's not, you know, we have, we have a lot of children who comes, come from, you know, multiple children coming from the same household. And honestly, that helps, you know, that helps, because we know those parents, those parents know us, we have a relationship that's been formed, um, which goes back to the sibling priority. And is sibling priority a concern of mine at our school? Absolutely. Again, I told you, I'm an honest person. Yes, absolutely, it's a concern, because a high percentage of our kindergarten students are sibling, are, are guaranteed a spot as it stands now, if they go through the proper channels and meet the requirements through the lottery, they're guaranteed a spot in kindergarten.
See, I don't understand that.
And that takes a high percentage of our, of our children.
The guaran- there is no, as, as far as I understood it, this, there shouldn't be a guaranteed spot, there should be a priority and an algorithm that spits out whether they got in or not.
If they, the way it stands now, is if the, if the child, if the sibling, um, the parent apply, okay, let's say we have a third grader, and then they have a sibling, uh, entering kindergarten, and the parent goes online, applies through the lottery, meets all the requirements that the lottery says by the deadline, the way it stands now, then, and the, and then that parent provides the birth certificate to the schools of choice office, um, showing that here, you know, these, this is my child who's here now, this is my child who's coming, and so then, you know, once they make that link and that connection, then whenever the lottery is done, there are children who get placement, um, based on the fact that they have the sibling priority status.
Well, I didn't understand that's how it was supposed to work. I mean, I understand that's how it does work.
But that's how, that's how it currently works.
Right. Does it work that way everywhere, Dr. Aguilar, do you know?
For, for elementary schools, it does. I, I cannot speak on behalf of middle or high, but for elementary schools, it does.
Okay, so...
So that's what I'm saying, so these parents, and I've been the principal there for five years, these parents, for years, some of them, we are on their fourth, fifth child, okay, uh, working with the, the same family with those children, and, uh, and so, if we, if that changes, and, and their next child, I, I just want fair notice for our families and our, our parents, whatever the deci- whatever the decision may be.
Yeah, so, um, I guess my first question or comment is, I understand your focus on wanting a family school, but aren't, is it, schools that are zoned? Isn't Westside a family school, cause all those families that are zoned, those kids are going through the program for years and years and years?
I mean, I would imagine, I'm not there, unless there's, unless they're more transit or any of that, which you have at every school, including ours, so...
Right, so if the overriding vision for your school is that it'd be a family school, then perhaps it should be...
I didn't say that was the overriding vision, I don't want to, I said that that is a benefit of our school, because we do know the families, we have a relationship there, that's what I, that was the comment, and if I said something other than that, then I apologize.
I know, and we're trying to understand with, but, talking about the randomness of the lottery, so this is something, it's not information we requested, actually, a member of the public made a public records request for some demographic data for all of the schools. And one of the things that came to our attention is that your school is very unique, and it's racial makeup. What is your racial makeup at your school?
Uh, socioeconomic status-wise, we're, we're race, okay, I'll, I can give you both. Our socioeconomic status, we're right at the fifty-fifty, fifty-two, forty-eight mark for that, and our race is, uh, let me think of WebPAMs, cause when I pull it up, I see it. It's about seventy percent white and about thirty percent, uh...
Right, the information that was provided to us is that it's ninety percent white...
Oh, no, that is not accurate information.
And ten percent African-American, and that your teaching staff is about ninety-three percent white and seven percent African-American. So those are raising some red flags.
Right.
Not in, not focusing on any intent, one way or the other, but in perhaps some unintended consequences of the processes with the sibling priority, um, going on for years and years and years. It may be in a, in effect excluding brown and black children in our community, and that's something that we are obligated to look at and to examine, uh, for root cause, okay?
Right.
So I just want you to know that, that's gonna be something that we have to look at. It came to our attention through a public record request. We had not even thought to ask about demographic data for any of the schools, okay? So that's something that just came up, I think, this week. And when we compare it to Westside, which is less than a mile away, right? Westside is forty percent white and sixty percent brown and black, Hispanic and Mex- uh, Hispanic and African-American. Um, and the, and the staff is about the same, about sixty, forty, around that area. All right, so with two schools in such close proximity, largely drawing from the same communities, we have to figure out where that disparity is occurring, and it may be because of the way that the sibling priority has been used at your school, um, and I, I do not think that anybody sat down and said, "How can we exclude black children from our school?"
Well, and sibling priority is, is not, it's not generated by one race and not another.
Right, so I'm saying, it may have been an unintentional consequence, it may have been an unintentional consequence, but it's where we are today. So it's something that we're gonna have to look at and to fix, or to address. So I just want you to understand, you said you're honest, and I know that you're very, um, vocal about your opinions, whether they're popular opinions or not, right? And I'm the same way.
Right.
So I wanna make sure, so rather than there being, uh, discussions behind closed doors or speculation about what the board's thinking or doing or intending, I'm telling you, this is one of the things that we have to look at, and in particular with your school, because your school stands out, it's way, way out here as an outlier with regards to the demographics at your school. So we have to examine that for your community.
Sure, and as I said at the beginning, I have concerns about sibling priority, because I feel it limits who does get to come in, mainly in our kindergarten level, because that's where we're accepting the bulk of our children. So when we do have siblings, we have a high percentage, those are all things I said earlier, a high percentage of siblings that come in. I'm not saying that we do not need to revamp sibling priority, I'm saying that we need to make sure that all of our families are aware of what's going on, so they're not blindsided by anything, and, you know, a twelve-month limitation, to me, is, um, you know...
Right, and I don't think we're trying to blindside anybody, at least my vision for any of these changes is that this is something that would go into effect for an upcoming school year, but people who are already in would be grandfathered in. So we're not gonna tell anybody that you got in by sibling priority, but that's not the rule, so you're out.
Right.
All right, so...
So can I make a request, then? That we, all the, the changes that, um, could possibly presented, that we maybe post those somewhere for, either in, in a format for the parents that we can send out on Facebook, or send out, uh, a news, a news press, or send out a letter, um, you know, to all of the schools that are being affected?
There will be so much communication about this, y'all are gonna get tired of seeing it.
Well, I just, like I said, I just would like them to be aware of everything, so that they have a voice. Thank you.
Mr. Hidalgo? All right, I'm gonna, oh, we have one more, okay. Yes, ma'am. After this, I'm gonna call for the vote on the priorities.
Uh, Casey Brewer, principal at Prairie Elementary. I have, uh, two concerns. One of them is the sibling priority, um, being so, so short. In a French immersion or any of the dual-language programs, one of the benefits is when you have siblings go through the same program, they are able to communicate with each other in that target language. And when you're just having one child in a family and the other child's going to other schools, you're gonna, you're gonna lose that in that program. That's one of the wonderful things, is that siblings are able to help each other in the language, they're able to work together, is able to promote the language in the community. My second concern is the experience rule. For instance, at Prairie Elementary, we have a, quite a large number of fifth graders that do go to LJ Alamo, uh, many of them are African-American, and you have a two-year experience rule, many of these children only have one year, cause they'll have fifth-year band, fifth-grade band, but they won't have the monetary, you know, means in their homes to have that second year of experience to give them that qualification, because, you know, private lessons and things are very expensive.
Yes, ma'am, now, just to clarify, the experience priority is not an exclusion? Like, if you have only one year, you're not, not disallowed? It's a, uh, it's a way to get a higher, I guess, um, higher probability of getting selected in the lottery, uh, as a priority? So it's not an exclusion?
I guess my concern was that LJ Alamo, if you also have the, the neighborhood kids being able to take a large amount of those spots, which they will, are surrounding LJ Alamo, a lot of those kids do go to LJ Alamo, so you have those spots taken, then you have all the ones coming from J. Wallace James, because they have priority feeding in, it's gonna really limit the kids around the district, not just from Prairie, but around the district who only have that one-year, uh, ban to get in. That would be my concern there. It's not even my school, but, on that.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hidalgo?
Um, Ms. Ozzy?
Sure.
Who is gonna be responsible for solidifying this experience priority and, you know, doing the research, and, and what is, how is that gonna be decided? And where is it gonna be decided?
So, what I've, um, I've sent out an email, I have rubrics from all the academies that do auditions, for example, we're talking about Alamo, so Joan Green has these, um, really transparent rubrics on a grading scale. So, I know with, with Joan Green, Brian LeFay, who's in Visual and Applied Arts at Como, and Dr. Roban with Performing Arts at Como, the three of them, they all also utilize an interview-style process, too. They don't just say, "Play," and then walk out. So they talk to the student, they engage, you know, so in that, they, they explain that I've been playing this for two years or three years, or I've been doing this, or I've had private lessons, et cetera. So, once they do that, and once they go through a rubric, they, they look at posture, they look at, I mean, after the violin, so the way you hold a violin, or whatever else you do, um, once you go through that and you, you, um, rate the proficiency of that student to be able to match what is offered at the school, um, the academy directors have access to go into the application software system and check off that that student did meet the expectations, did qualify for the audition, um, and, um, mark if that student has those two or three years of, uh, experience priority. Does that answer?
It'll be fine for now.
Paula Gidry at LEO JUDESE, Academy Director, fifth-grade teacher. Um, just a couple of things, just on the size of the school, I know y'all say busting at the seams, because it's not permanent facilities, I mean, we fit into where we are, but, and I know different conversations have come up about, "Oh, well, you know, take the Sears building and you would open a school there." The cost to do that, why not just put a permanent structure to replace our, you know, our portable buildings? To me, that would be a solution, instead of trying to put in a whole nother faculty over there. So that's just one thing, on the portable buildings and, you know, making our school a better place for our kids. And if race is an issue again, then why not put, okay, we have to have a certain percentage in our lottery for, you know, uh, for minority and non-minority? We have no problem with that, that's how we started out. I have, a lot of my families that I've been teaching, I'm on their third and fourth kid, or my Asian, I have a few Asian families we have, I mean, I have black families, we have a lot of siblings in both races, it's not just one.
It's illegal.
It's illegal.
It's illegal.
We can't do it, it's illegal.
Okay, um, so, anyway, I mean, just, you know, thinking, I mean, it can't, when you're looking at the cost, though, of putting in a whole nother, or, or taking over another place and putting us in two different places, just do what, what needs to be done. I mean, there's kindergarten, there's portable buildings, I went to kindergarten in, in that school, and our staff is only eighteen teachers, so, you know, the racial makeup is what it is, I mean, you know?
Your point's not lost on us, it's, uh, not so much with elementary schools, but with our middle and high schools, we do have, we have capacity at some schools, we have empty classrooms, and that's one of the things that we're trying to balance out, is that where we have, uh, classrooms in middle and high school, we'd like to figure out a way to get rid of temporary buildings, cause that is one of the solutions. Elementary school, we don't really have that luxury, cause every school seems to be just about at capacity, and, uh, yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Gardner, principal of Alamo, I just have one question. I'm concerned about the child, I think of my own children, that are in sixth grade, and my only question is, what about the child who doesn't have the one or the two years? But they have the desire and they have the want, and they wanna come to Alamo to be exposed, cause they really wanna learn to be a dancer, and they really wanna learn to play a strings instrument. That's the only concern I have at this point, cause everybody else has said everything, so, does anyone have an answer for that?
My response to that, I don't have an answer, but my response to that is, the issues we're having, the reason we're discussing this right now is because that child who has the desire is already being prevented from going to that school, because their siblings wanna go to that school just because they wanna go to that school. We're filling up the seats with people who don't care as much as the next child about that program, and we're allowing it to happen. That's my biggest problem with the, uh, with the prior, with that priority. So, that's already happening now. We're gonna, we're, it's just gonna keep getting worse if we let it keep going. There, again, there are already many students, Health Academy, the list goes on and on, and we proved that this year with the performing arts moving into Como, by the drastic drop in enrollment. So people were taking those seats who could've cared less about that program just to go to Lafayette High, and I'm sorry, that's, I'm passionate about it because this is the issue.
No, it's okay, cause I agree with you on that. No, I agree with you, I agree that I have students that are at Alamo because their mother wants them there, because they're running away from something. I, I do not disagree with you, Mr. Hidalgo, I am, I agree, but I just wanna make sure that when it's all said and done, that the priority doesn't limit that child that didn't have that one or two, that's all I'm saying. I'm not arguing about, I do agree that I have children that maybe are there, cause their mothers want them there, and just cause it's Alamo. I just wanna make sure that the child that really, really wants, but doesn't know how to do a pirouette or cross, that has the opportunity to come to Alamo and have my fabulous dance teacher teach her that, that's all, I wanted to make sure that that is gonna be allowed, that's gonna, there's some method to have that child.
Ms. Gardner, while you're up, I have a couple of questions for you.
I'll do my best, I knew I shouldn't have gotten up.
So, well, so your school's a little bit unique, because it is, it does have zoned students, but your zoned students are very small for your total population, are they not?
Yes, ma'am, I think my population this morning was one thousand one hundred and four... Yes, ma'am, I think my population this morning was 1,104, and I believe my zoned students is about 376.
So one of the difficulties at your school is you have to provide a regular curriculum for your zoned kids who are not in Performing Arts? And then a separate, a separate, but kinda same curriculum, I guess, for Performing Arts? I mean, you're basically running a little mini-school and a bigger school together.
They're all blended right now. So I could have a child who lives on Rose Lane Boulevard and a child who lives on Milton Avenue, and they could both be in the Dance 2 class.
And do you still have 5th graders at your school?
5th graders? Yes, ma'am, 74.
Okay, they're gifted kids or zoned kids?
No, ma'am, they're completely zoned kids. Um, when, from Woodvale, but Woodvale has a larger number. Last year, I think there was 110, and then when it dispersed into 5th, we ended up with, um, 74.
Alright. So you heard our discussion earlier about the proximity priority. So if, and this is hypothetical because we're just talking about ideas.
I'm all hypothetical, yes, ma'am.
If your school became 100% Performing Arts choice, but we had the proximity priority, do you feel like that would still give the kids who lived within that area an opportunity to attend your school with that priority?
I think that, um, I don't know who got up here and said it, maybe within a reason. Oh, I think it was you, Mr. Bruce Art, that said maybe within reason, within an unlimited amount, that, um, I was listening to the priority. I think that within reason, maybe a percentage. Uh, because I do believe that children from all, we're a great district, we're large. I think that all children should have that equal opportunity. I know transportation's an issue and that's part of this. But I do think that, um, I wouldn't want to limit. I mean, I wear Alamo all the time. I saw, people stop me on a daily basis in a grocery store. My child tried to get into Alamo and didn't make it, or my child goes there, I went there. So I do believe that it should not just be open. And I think it also depends on, you were talking about facilities and reducing. I think it also depends if you are going to limit the amount of students I can have. If you're gonna say, Ms. Gardner, you can only have 1,000 students or you can have 500 students. I think that is gonna depend on my proximity thought.
We're gonna be talking about that at a later time, too.
So maybe when you talk about that, maybe I'll have a different opinion.
Okay. But right now, uh, probably about 20% of your students are in zone. If you don't count the 5th graders?
Yes, now about 300.
And then if you split those into three, then you're looking at, what, about 7% or 8% for each class that are in zone? So if every single one of them applied to a zoned school, it's still not taking up all your seats? Because it's just the nature of that particular neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am, it's an older neighborhood. Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna call for the vote on this, and I want to remind everyone, we're just, right now, we're establishing what those priorities are. I think, obviously, from our discussion today, we need to do a little bit more work, maybe before the next, uh, maybe before the pathways discussion meeting, where we set a, maybe a weighted average, or a weight per priority, or a priority for the priorities, or...
Yes, I'll go with the developer tomorrow.
I'll let you guys come back with that. And then, um, like with all, you know, programs, I think maybe there needs to be some sort of waiver process so that if Ms. Lemare has a, you know, this, uh, a sibling that's, uh, maybe two grade levels instead of one grade level, that she has the ability to at least, um, make an argument to maybe the super... I don't know what that waiver process needs to be, but I think, um, with all, you know, concrete processes, there needs to be some sort of waiver process within limits. I mean, there's still gonna be, you know, we might have, uh, if we vote on it later, we might have administrative, or, I'm sorry, admissions limits, uh, and everything, so...
I, I would like to add to that too, real quick. Um, and I showed Mr. Bruce Art and Ms. Morris one day. Um, if you look at the sibling priorities right now, I'm, not the sibling priorities. If you look at the way the lottery, what happened after the lottery. So, you know, we talked about A and B list, that's already in the past. But, um, if you look at the list and you look at the priorities and you look at the applicants versus the ones that got invited versus the ones that got on the waitlist, you have students on the waitlist that are sibling priority that are above the rest of the students on the waitlist. So, in fact, uh, we were looking at, um, J. Wallace James Kindergarten. So you have, you know, you're split, but you have kindergarten students that are on the waitlist, that are the first 20 students on the waitlist that are still tagged sibling priority, which means that the ones that already gone in were already sibling priority too. So by eliminating the sibling, or reducing that sibling priority, you're gonna actually let more students into the program that didn't have a chance. And by the, the data shows that even those siblings are still not gonna be affected because you have so many students that are sibling on the waitlist already.
Mr. Latulue?
I'm just, I'm just a guest today, I'm not a board member. Uh, I couldn't get off work early enough. I'd like y'all to, uh, maybe if you could quickly explain the proximity, what you're aiming at on that?
Yeah, we, it's not on my sheet, so you'll have to read, either read it or explain it, Ms. Ozzy.
The proximity priority currently would only apply to several schools, which include ELEO, J. Wallace, Alamo, if, because it's 80, 90% schools of choice students. Um, these schools that are 100% school sites, they are physically in a geographic area that is, that has a naturally zoned school. So the students that are naturally zoned to West Side, and I'll use ELEO Judes because that's in your area. So the students naturally zoned to West Side would also get a proximity priority if they want to apply to ELEO Judes. The students living in this S.J. Montgomery or whatever that other, because I think that, again, is split between two. I think it's either, it's Boucher and, um, S.J. Montgomery. But we'll just go with that for now. Those students would get a proximity priority because they live within that naturally zoned school where that 100% non-zoned school is located in. Does that help explain what that means? Sorry, we can just stand together, we'll just talk together.
And it's only a priority, not a guarantee. They still have to meet all the other qualifications and it's just like a sibling priority.
What's fueling this, transportation? I mean, what's fueling the proximity?
Opportunity.
Opportunity.
I think...
It's 100% lottery, everybody has the same chance.
I can pull up, um...
I mean, Brock was, Brock was in school of choice. I know school of choice very well. I have three schools of choice in my district. And I stay in my schools constantly. So I'm just wondering, how does it give students at West Side a chance when everybody in this parish has the same chance to get into ELEO? That's all I, I mean, if you can explain that one.
I think because things like sibling priority and other things severely, based on the size of the school and based on the number of students that can attend, this sibling priority and other scenarios severely limit, uh, what you just described as the whole parish has an opportunity? Well, how many students are at ELEO Judes? Right, 378 students out of how many thousands of opportunities we have? And that's, the sibling priority and others are really, in my opinion, hampering.
But we're talking proximity, we're not talking sibling. You can eliminate the sibling priority. So with a proximity, how does it, how does it make, how is anybody at this advantage? If it's completely 100% school of choice and no other pathway to get in but the lottery, proximity now becomes an advantage to get in over someone else now. So you're making an advantage for one group and taking an advantage away from... That's just, that's just my theory.
I think you, I mean, you're exactly right. I mean, it does give, and one thing I think you missed is, today, because there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen on these priorities, and, and it may be different. Like, we may have one school where, um, say it's an underpopulated school. Uh, we may want to manipulate these priorities, right? So that we can increase, uh, whether it's neighborhood percentage or sibling percentage or experience percentage. Um, but we, today, we're gonna vote on simply a recommendation to have these be the priorities, and then at a subsequent meeting, meet and say either, you know, across the board, we're gonna say, "This one is worth 10%. This one's worth 25, this one's worth 50." Um, and have that discussion a little bit more. And whether it's blanket across the district for any schools of choice or it's different for each school, I mean, I think that needs further discussion.
So, for example, Brett, one of the things we talked about is, and we'll talk about it more later, is making Alamo 100% school of choice. But there are still a handful of kids that are zoned for Alamo. I think only 20% of their kids are zoned and all the rest are out of zone. So this proximity priority would give those kids that would be zoned for Alamo still the opportunity to apply if they qualify for everything else within the school. Um, so, you know, we, so it's sort of addressing that kind of an issue. The kids who live in the immediate proximity. And there are some other issues, and I don't want to repeat everything I said earlier, but I'll be happy to talk to you about my comments on that later.
I'm just, do we know, uh, ELEO? Is there a way to know the makeup of where the students come from? I can, I...
I think, yeah, I think we have that information. I think it's half, I think half are actually from the zone, correct me? Right?
A large percentage, yeah. I think it's probably about right now.
So it's highly likely it's not gonna, if, if, if hypothetically, proximity priority was given a weight of a quarter? Like, if each of one of these four priorities were equal, it's highly unlikely we're gonna see much of a change in, in your, right, you're already half. So it sounds like most of the kids want to attend there that are already in the zone.
Yeah, 'cause I, you know, not being able to attend earlier and, you know, I know at these committee meetings, a lot more is discussed
Here you go.
before it comes up to the board.
Are you able to show that to all of us, Ozzy, or not?
I can, um... Okay, thanks.
Because, I mean, I hope y'all can appreciate, you know, my stance of not... That, that school in this state, last year or the year before, was ranked 42 in the state. Not the parish, not the Kaden area, in the state. And, I mean, they do a tremendous job. And, uh, everybody wants to get into ELEO, and I'd love to see everybody, I'd love to build a brand-new ELEO Judes. I wish the public would grant us the funds to do that and we could put 1,000 students in there.
So if, sorry, if, I'll go, I'll switch sides so you can see it. So if you look at this, this is called Guide 12. Um, it shows every single school in the district. It shows the racial makeup of the school. It shows the free and reduced makeup of the school. And it shows where the parcel addresses are from. I can change the filters to show you free and reduced or female versus male. Um, this is where, right here, is your cluster right here. So if I do a polygon and I draw it, it'll tell you exactly how many students are coming from that, that particular area. And if you can see, it wouldn't necessarily affect it much. Um, because you would still be getting the majority of your population coming. As you can see here, it's become that neighborhood school. So by adding a proximity priority, it's actually not going to really affect you. It's just gonna change, the proximity priority would supersede quite possibly hypothetically, the sibling priority. So you would have students from in your area still able to get there, but maybe a student that wanted to get there before that couldn't go there and is going to West Side could probably get there now. As you can see, the rest of them, the majority comes from, like, Austin, Karen Crowe, and then you have a few here on the side here, and you have a few from this eastern edge of Dusan. I'm sorry, I zoomed out. Um, you have a few here and there, but let me, I can, uh...
Northwest.
So adding a proximity priority, as you can see, would not necessarily affect your... No, because as we, so one of the things that we talked about earlier was that I was gonna go with the developer because I do know that they have a way to weight these priorities. So you can rank them and you can also weight them. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna find out exactly how we can weight those so that I can bring it back to the board members and let them know how it could be weighted so they can decide how they want to rank these based on those weighted averages.
Because, to maybe give you a little history, and this may help Mr. Bruce Art, with whatever year school of choice was started, I was encouraged to put, you know, we were encouraged to put my son into the lottery for J. Wallace James. He was at Ridge, and we did. And if I'm not mistaken, L, uh, J. Wallace, 60% of the students were majority-minority. That was the makeup of the school. The remaining 40% were open lottery. That's how it started, best to my recollection. So Brock's chance of getting in, he was in, he was in the 40, he was in the 40%. I don't think that's how it works anymore. I don't know what's happened to that formula, but that's how it was then. And I'm not sure if 60% wasn't neighborhood or within the area, zoned in. You may, you may want, you may want to ask that question because to me, it was not a complete 100% school of choice back then. It may have been.
Though...
It wasn't? Okay, yeah, you being recorded. Thought that's what I remembered. Think I was dreaming.
They had closed Truman, St. Antoine, and J. Wallace James. So the judge ruled, we were, um, the judge ruled that these children could come to our school. They were split between Montgomery, Woodvale, Austin, and Prairie. And so we had, uh, I think we had about 125 that came. That first year, the judge, we met with him several times because of problems of proximity. They weren't at this school because they wanted the arts. They were there because they claimed that school. Y'all took mine away, this is a new school, we want it, we live near it, and that's what happened. And the judge had finally made a decision, "I made a mistake." If you're going to have a school of choice, it needs to be pure lottery. No zones should attend it. And I think if you look at some of the schools of choice that still have a zone, they're the ones having some of the problems, filling their slots. Um, so proximity, just because you live next door to my school and mama wants you there, it's going to take away what we've built over the years of having an art and technology school or having an environmental school.
Well, I would disagree that the student takes away from what your job is to teach the student.
If they're not there because of the arts or technology at our school, we struggle to keep them in the arts and help them with them. Um, I mean, we keep them and we work with them.
But we don't have to...
But if you're failing the arts, we do put them out the following year. But that's only with our 4th and 5th graders.
Alright, well, I'm gonna, if you guys don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote on these. And again, we're just voting on what the priorities are that we're gonna consider. For instance, we're not gonna consider six other things, it's just these four things. Um, and at a subsequent meeting, we can decide whether we're gonna have a blanket, how we're going to weight these priorities. We don't even, I mean, honestly, I don't think anybody in this room can explain the algorithm for how the computer spits out lottery choices. So until we have a better appreciation for how those selections are made, I think it's premature to talk about how we prioritize these priorities. So, um, the four, so I'm gonna make a motion that this committee recommends to the board to accept the, uh, four priorities of sibling, experience, pathway, and proximity. And that'll be the motion, and again, um, so we have a second. And, uh, I'll call for a vote in a second. But again, they remind, I'm just reminding everyone that we will set how we're, how these priorities will affect the choices for who gets into the, uh, schools of choice later on, so... And I'll start with Mr. Hidalgo on this, and... Yes? Thank you. So we have four yeses. Alright, um, Ms. Ozzy, the next thing, points of entry? We have points of entry, let's just talk about that real quick.
Okay. Points of entry, um, restricted grades 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12. So the points of entry would be pre-K and K, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 6th grade, 9th grade. There is, however, from a previous meeting, um, I did point to the late-entry appeal, the appeal for late entries. So, for example, if somebody wanted to get in at one of those non-standard entry points, then they could apply and appeal through the academy directors if there's space available, if they meet the requirements, and, um, maybe go through one extra step for entry, perhaps an interview or something else to get in.
I have no comment on your recommendation. Neither does Ms. Morris. Mr. Hidalgo, Mr. Bruce, do you have any comments on this? Alright, I'm gonna make a... All right, I'm gonna make a, well, I'm gonna make a motion and then open it up for discussion to the public. So I move that we accept the recommendation for the points of entry restrictions at grades four, five, seven, eight, ten, eleven, and twelve, and late entry granted only through a late entry appeal. So we have a motion, a second by Ms. Morris. And any public comment on the points of entry restrictions? Yes, ma'am, it, and it'll be on the board.
These are the ones that are not points of entry. So these are the ones that are excluded.
The ones that are excluded from point of entry are fourth, fifth, seventh, eighth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth.
Right. And this is part-
Pre-K and, you can enter in pre-K, you can enter in kindergarten, first and second. You can enter in sixth grade, you can enter in ninth grade.
And what we're really talking about here is the lottery. You can apply for the lottery.
So I, I wanna clarify the lottery real quick. Um, the lottery is just a tool used to randomly select students when you have more applicants than seats available. So technically, if you have an academy program and you have it open and you have thirty applicants and only fifty seats, by whatever deadline, you know, we, we decide to have as a deadline, then there's no lottery that happens. Those students, if they're qualified, they get in. So, but yes, I guess in a sense, to answer your question, we're talking about that.
All right, it looks like we don't have, well, we do. Okay, good.
My concern, Jennifer Gardner, again, I'm not, I can start right here. My concern is, um, entry at six at the middle school level. So I know that later in the meeting, we're going to be talking about, um, criteria, I believe, to stay in, to get in. So my concern is, is I would like to see my criteria, like at my campus, at a sixth and seventh. I can agree with the eighth because an eighth grader coming in and putting them in a band-one class, that's, that's a big struggle. But, um, for the end of the year, when I have the sixth graders that really didn't make it, so that takes my seventh grade number and really decreases it. When, um, at the end of the year, our biggest movement of children that get exited from the academy is between sixth and seventh. That they just really, this wasn't for them, and hopefully this will fix it. But, um, I still would like to see that seventh grade still have a little bit of entry weighing in to fill those spots for the children that didn't make it, even in sixth grade. There was not, no spots for them. They still interested in seventh grade. I also would like to see my Arts Academy here, teachers here, I would like to see more Arts Academy teachers busy all day. I would like to see their roster completely full. That when I have twenty kids in sixth grade, twenty-five kids that didn't make it, I would like to see their days still full with the kids that have the opportunity. I mean, I could definitely understand the eighth grade, but I would still like to see the seventh grade a little bit more flexible.
All right, so-
Ms. Morris.
Ms. Gardner, so one of the things we'll be talking about later, though, is that if you have a sixth grader enter your program and they don't make it in your Arts Academy, then they're gonna go back to their zone school.
Correct.
They won't stay in your school.
Correct.
So that's something we'll talk about later. The other, the next thing we're talking about after this is reducing the number of kids who are entering the academies.
Yes, ma'am.
So that would reduce your overall enrollment over the course of three years in your case, in your year. And then because, because you're one of the schools that gets more applicants than seats, you would be on the lottery. So even for seventh grade, there would be this late entry. So if you had seventh grade seats available, there would be a process for you to fill those seats.
Okay, so it wouldn't be like I could never have a seventh grade student enter?
No, and that's a process. We're calling it a late entry.
Okay. And I think we were just kinda confused on the floor. We weren't, that's not a term that we've been exposed to yet, that late entry term.
Right. It just, I think what we're talking about here is that when the lottery is open for all of them, it's just gonna be sixth graders applying through the lottery. But there'll be a process, and this is something we can flesh out later, for the late entry, because you don't know how many seventh grade seats you're gonna have available. Um, but just removing that from the lottery. Same for the tenth graders at the high school level. Doesn't really change anything for the elementary, 'cause I don't think they have entry in fourth and fifth grade right now anyway, so.
And that's fine. I just, I didn't wanna close it off that if I lose twenty-five kids, I still want more Arts Academy teachers to have the students that all day long.
Right. The intent of that appeal process is to fill those spots, but-
Right.
But not so that it's regular where you have kids, like you said, entering in the eighth grade that don't know anything about band.
Correct. That's to have, that have the ability to come in and learn something and make something with it.
Right. But if you have a kid that says, hey, I really wanna learn band. I know I'm a late bloomer in the band area, so can you appeal, you know, can I go through this appeal process? And then there'll be some discretion where we can fill those seats.
Great, thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote on that so we can keep this moving. So, uh, I did make the motion, right. I made the motion. There was a second, so now I'll call for the vote. Mr. Broussard? Yes? All right, three yeses. So the next thing, um, Ozzy, we'll go ahead and talk about the reduction of up to twenty-five percent enrollment on those three schools. And if you could talk about why and then how this is a part of your solution?
Well, um, reduction in enrollment could happen organically by what we're gonna discuss even later and what we've discussed in the past. So if you set some priorities, if you, if you change a sibling priority, if you change the point of entries, if you change all those, um, I know twenty-five percent looks like a really scary number, but it's organically gonna happen anyway because of that. So you're gonna contain these, uh, you're, you're not gonna be busting out of the seams anymore with students packed up into a, a classroom and you just keep adding more sections because it's popular. You're gonna actually say, okay, we're gonna reduce it a little bit, we're gonna manage it a little bit better and see where we can maybe duplicate this somewhere else. The, you know, look at the mapping software, look at the interest, look at the trends. So if you reduce enrollment, you have more manageable, uh, manageable academies, you have more unique academies, you have less, uh, stressed-out academy directors able to manage, um, internships and, um, extracurricular activities. And we do, as Ms. Morris said in the beginning of this, that we do have a situation with schools that have numerous, uh, Butler, uh, temporary buildings. So although twenty-five percent looks like a scary number, it's, I would say at least fifteen percent of it will organically happen through some of these changes.
Are we, are we looking at twenty-five percent overall? It's not a scary situation, twenty-five percent per school? It's overall.
Can Ozzy be mine?
I'll let Ms. Morris, it was-
Okay, so for example, um, if we look at, let's look at, uh, Evangeline with their, uh, French immersion. So right now, their pre-K is set at a max of twenty kids and then all the other classes are set at forty-six. So we would reduce those by either twenty-five percent or maybe one class size, 'cause we need to keep in line the ratios as well. Um, but there may be some, like Acadiana High School, for instance. Its banking academy right now is set to have a hundred and six kids per class level in the banking. But if you look at the number of kids enrolled, uh, they're already below twenty-five percent of that. Twenty-five percent would put that limit at seventy-nine point five. That wouldn't affect Acadiana at all. It just limits the number in the future of how many kids. Um, and some of the academy directors, I believe the, is the Lafayette High School Health Academy? All right, I mean, I think she indicated to us at a prior meeting that her program's gotten so large, it's almost unmanageable. So it'd be better to reduce the entering. It's not to kick anybody out who's already in the programs, but just to reduce it in the future.
And this is for one year?
It'd be like on a rolling basis, right? So if we started at next year, you'd reduce the number of seats that are open during the lottery. And then the next year, it'd be the sixth and seventh grade, and then the third year'd be, you know, so each year they're matriculating up, you have that reduced number. So that, oh, over the course of three or four years, you're gonna reduce the total size of the program.
All right, any more board member questions? It says here, all academies on a rolling basis except for, uh, biomedical at Caron Crowe, academy of IT at Caron Crowe High, and environmental sciences at Lafayette Middle. Would be a reduction on the entry, or entry class.
Right, and, and like, uh, Ms. Ozzy explained, part of the reason is, if we look at LEO Judes at our other chart, the permanent cap, capacity at LEO Judes is for a hundred and eighty students. That's your permanent classroom capacity. Well, but one of the, one of the goals of the district is to eliminate Butler buildings. Um, and so we have several schools, like right now, LEO Judes is at two hundred and ten percent of its permanent classroom capacity. So Prairie is at two hundred and forty-one percent of its permanent classroom capacity. So this is just an effort to begin working towards, uh, meeting that permanent classroom capacity. It's, it's a long-term process. It doesn't happen all at once. So as an example for LEO Judes, it might mean at your entry level, uh, reducing a class section, okay? But, but those stu, those teachers would go to other schools. They'd still be within the system. So, I mean, they're employed by the system, not by the school, right? So.
Mr. Lachley?
I mean, Lafayette High has what, forty-something Butler buildings?
Twenty.
Twenty? Oh, Lafayette High had almost-
Believe it or not, Mr. Lachley, I was surprised on this list. Um, Lafayette High School is just very, a very tiny bit over its permanent classroom capacity. Um, but they have-
So they have-
Twenty-two-
Twenty-two temporary buildings. We, we did move some off this summer.
Right. So they have a modular wing that's separate from the Butler buildings. It's not Butler. But its permanent classroom capacity is, um, nineteen-twenty and their student enrollment is twenty-one-seventy-three. So we're almost down within their permanent classroom capacity at Lafayette High School.
So how many Bu, uh, portable buildings does LEO have? Nine? Okay, so eight. All right, so my question is, we would sacrifice education at LEO over portable buildings?
I don't think we're sacrificing, I mean, this is my opinion, but, um, I think what we're trying to do is better manage our resources. And again, you weren't here for this part. I don't, I don't think that we have, when you look at the classroom counts, there's not much we can, we, there's not much we can do on the elementary level. I mean, you take them out of this place, put them in this place, we're still gonna have a boatload of temporary classrooms. On the elementary, I'm sorry, on the middle and high school level, uh, we do have the ability to, to manage, um, our facilities a lot more. And I think my question regarding this would be, would this be a directive? And I don't know if I'm asking, I'm kinda asking you and all of us here. Is this a directive to the superintendent to reduce and better utilize your facilities using your schools of choice? Or with twenty-five percent being a goal, most of that coming from high school and middle school? Because there's not much you can do at the elementary? Or are we talking about a blanket across the board, twenty-five percent reduction, all academies?
'Cause I mean, we can even use Prairie as an example. It's fifty percent portable buildings, fifty percent regular classroom. The only way to get them, that school, which is in my district, manageable, i- is probably take the academy of French immersion away, and you can't do that. That's where it started. You know, that, that's one of the first schools of, of French immersion that, you know, Prairie, Prairie had portable buildings before they opened. But I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna support cutting LEO one bit. That's a no vote from the get-go. That, you can count it. There may be eight-one, but I'm not affecting LEO Judes. That's not gonna, I'll fight that tooth and nail till, till the final vote. That little school is not busting at the seams. It is a system that works. And I invite, I'll invite each and every one of my board members to come to that school with me. That is an open campus. Ms. La Mer will open the gate for you personally and come see how smoothly that school runs. And it's an A school without gifting.
I don't disagree with you.
That is an A school, pound for pound.
But we can't hold up progress for the other forty-something schools based off of what works at just one school. So what we're trying to do is, is establish criteria in a program that help the whole system. And if it doesn't work at LEO for, for some reason, I mean, certainly we can discuss it more, but to say that we can't establish some sort of control mechanism to better control attendance at, at all of these schools of choice. I mean, we do have issues at, you know, when we have a school at a hundred and fifty percent and we have another school at sixty-three percent, for us, is people that are also charged with managing our facilities, we gotta do something about that. And that's why I'm asking this kind of a general question. Is it, I don't know if the solution is a blanket twenty-five percent across the board. I don't think that is a solution personally. I do think it needs to be a tool used by the superintendent or by us, or by whoever's in charge of setting the enrollment at each school to better utilize, um, our facilities. And again, like I said before, I've, we look at this chart, and this is, I don't know if you guys have this. It's the, it's called the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen classroom counts and- Okay, it's all on, it is all online, am I correct?
No.
All right. Well, let me, but what I wanna illustrate, you see all this red here? This is our elementary school capacity.
Permanent classroom.
Permanent classroom capacity. But if you look here, there's a whole lot of white. In high school, there's some more white. What that indicates is that in high, in middle school and in high school, we have a lot of empty classrooms that we can fill, right? So what we're trying to do is find that mechanism where how can we limit enrollment into these schools of choice for a period of time, um, so that we can better utilize the facilities that we have. I don't know, and I'm speaking, I mean, again, this is a committee where we're trying to work through solutions here. I don't know if this is a good solution across the board for elementary, because I don't know if it achieves the intent as it's worded, but I do think we need to address it somehow. Any comments?
Right, so it may be one of those things that would require input from the, either academy directors or principals, if there's not a director, on the impact on their school of the particular school of choice. For the ones that are a hundred percent, it's easy, 'cause it's the whole school. But for Prairie, for instance, um, I mean, the, the Butler buildings actually exceed fifty percent of the permanent classroom capacity. Uh, so we are voluntarily sending out zone kids to a school that is already, it, it's probably the most overcrowded school in our district. It's at two hundred and forty-one percent of its permanent capacity. So, um, and, and I think we opened some pre-K classes there this year. Uh, so we have to look at some different issues, and so it may be one that we have to look at on a school-by-school basis and get some more information from staff. Um, the three schools that were excluded, were excluded because they actually have plenty of permanent classroom capacity at this current time. And those are the middle schools and Caron Crowe High School, so.
So, Dr. Aguilar, on this item, I don't know if a blanket reduction of twenty-five percent really solves the problem. I understand the intent, and maybe it does solve the problem in high school and middle school. But do you think that you could put some effort into recommending to the board either restrictions on entry or sizes of some of the schools of choice, so we better utilize some of the facilities that we have? You can say no.
We, we'll work on that. I, I really don't believe that what's driving the recommendation is anything more than, there's an economy of scale. When you exceed that economy of scale, it, it can become overextended. Um, in, in the case of LEO Judes, it's a landlocked piece of property. And to say that, let's build a, let's build a per, permanent addition to LEO Judes, we'd have to move out the temporary buildings. We can't move them anywhere else on campus to build the new permanent structure. In the case of Prairie Elementary School, there's nearly as many French immersion students, in fact, slightly more French immersion students than there are end-zone students at Prairie Elementary School. Lafayette High has, when you look at the portable wing, modular wing, plus the temporary buildings, they do have thirty temporary classrooms. But I'm not sure that reducing our inventory of temporary buildings will be accomplished by this small, small adjustment to overall student capacity in our schools of choice, formerly schools of choice, now magnet schools.
Well, what if we, it sounds like you do have a solution that we're working with your academy directors.
Actually, I, I don't know that I'm working with my academy directors, but I do have, um, do have some ideas that we'd like to present to the board in November specifically as it relates to our elementary schools. You are correct. You are correct, and we will publish these two documents. The staff just was able to provide them today. That's why they're not online at this point. Our elementary schools are collectively a hundred-and-sixty percent over capacity. So ground zero is elementary schools in the district. This parish could, if you looked at a map and you looked at rezoning, could easily build another five elementary school zones in the parish and have five more elementary schools. And we would still have a need for temporary buildings on some of those campuses. So we have to come to a day of reckoning regarding the elementary schools, schools of choice. So if we made a very, very small adjustment to overall seat capacity, it would be slow and gradual. The proposal recommended was the entry level grade would perhaps lose one section. So the overall effect for any, any academy would be, let's say, twenty-five students, fewer. As we begin to right-size these academies, we want all of these academies to go through an accreditation process. I'm not sure all of them are ready to be accredited formally, to be recognized as a true magnet academy. So we have some work to do to get some schools of choice programs up to the level where they'll be accredited and recognized as a true magnet school. But I think what we can do is come back to you and, and have some conversation about capacity, true capacity for these programs. We do have some, we do have some academy directors who have said, anecdotally, that their program is five times larger than others. And yet they only have one staff member at that school, working for that school of choice. Is that fair and proper? So we need to come back to you with some ideas about capacity and resources and available space.
Right, so for this one, I'm gonna make a recommendation or a motion that we...
We can probably just let it pass.
Yeah, well, I was gonna just say, you know, we make a...
Can I make a comment while you're going?
Yeah, go ahead.
To Mr. Lachely, I, I understand where you're coming from. If we leave everything the way it is, then we're asking for more trouble than we want to bite into. I think something has to be done. I don't think anyone in this, anyone in this room know what has to be done. But I would ask the principals of these schools of choice, if, if somewhere in the near future, we would gather all those involved to get some input. But certainly, something has to, has to change with the way we are running the school of choice and hopefully the, this academy and to curb this, because we are overcapacity at most schools. Dr. Aguilar said if we build five new elementary schools, it'll solve our problem. But we are not at that point financially, but we are at that point with the student population. So doing nothing about this challenge, I, I think is asking for more trouble down the line. So we have to make a decision in the near future as to how we want to address what I think has gotten out of hand in the last several years and now we have to solve what, what could be a good problem.
I can agree with that, Mr. Bruce Art, but the thing about it, and, and you know, the reason I'm gonna stay on the LEO bandwagon is, those aren't nine temporary buildings at LEO. Those are permanent portable buildings. We cannot call them temporary anymore because some of them have been there forty, fifty years. The, the population of LEO cannot go up. It's not broken. It cannot go up. It can only go down. It works. It's fine. Reducing student capacity at schools not gonna help anything. Because if, if our tax would've passed, we were building a wing at LEO to replace the portable buildings to keep the same amount of students in the same capacity. So why, now that we can't do that, the portable buildings are there. They're not temporary anymore. So why, why reduce students at LEO? Over time, lose teachers at LEO? When the school is not overcapacity and if the tax would've passed and we'd have built the wing? We couldn't have said it was overcapacity anymore. So that's, that's my argument on that one. It, she can't take any more students. The enrollment will never get any higher at LEO unless we build a new school, add a wing, go two-story, do whatever we do. And that's donated land. It's either a school or it's not a school. If, if we ever move that school, that property goes back to, it's not our property. It doesn't belong to the school system. So that's just my argument on that school.
I can, I can understand your argument. I think everyone here can, can have a legitimate argument about their school. I've got, I'm fortunate to have J. Wallace James in my district who, who meets all the criteria. We've got that balance. We've got somebody from all over the parish of Lafayette. So we meet every criteria in a perfect situation. But we still have some challenges we have to address there as well. So all we, all I'm saying is that we entertain in the conversation to make this system better.
Right.
And changes has to be made and we all wanna make it better. And that's, that's why I'm at with that.
Oh, I can, I can respect that, but my, my thing is, I'm not willing to fix something that's not broken. Not in any way, means, form, or fashion. That school is not broken. It does not need to be fixed. It does not need to be tweaked. It needs to be left alone and continue to grow academically. It cannot grow student or capacity-wise. It can continue to grow academically. And two years ago, when this subject came up, I fought passionately for LEO. I will, once again, fight passionately for LEO. I will not vote for any change to that school whatsoever. And like I said, it may end up eight-one. But there's nothing wrong with that model. Like I said, if the tax would've passed, we were building a wing to take out the portable buildings. So you'd have still had the same amount of students. We wouldn't have pulled them with a brand-new wing. We'd have left the enrollment at what it is. And all I say is, we need to leave the enrollment as is. Prairie, that's a challenge. That's a challenge. I mean, me and Mr. Kinesic met for coffee one day. We discussed Prairie. You can't lower the zone students for that school because there's nowhere else to send them, anywhere close by. You can't. French immersion program is full. Yes, Acadia's Business Academy, to date, I don't think has ever filled up. School has, off the top of my head, maybe eight portable buildings with almost eighteen-hundred students. That's, that's not very many portable buildings. And I mean, where, you wanna cap Acadia, you can. It doesn't fill up anyway. It may fill up in the future, but it's not, it's not filling up now. And I mean, that's, that's the three that I represent, that I'm in, I'm in these schools constantly. All I'm asking my fellow board members to do is let LEO continue just the way it is.
Alright. Ms. Morris?
So Dr. Aguilar, one of the things I think with the elementary schools that we have to look at is the pre-K program. I'm a hundred percent in support of pre-K. I wish that we could provide pre-K from birth to five. We have a very robust pre-K four. But when we're looking at schools particularly like Boucher, Evangeline, and Prairie that are so far beyond the permanent classroom capacity, I'm not sure we're doing the right thing by adding an additional sixty students in there that we are, that we don't have to be providing services to, at least in that format. So that may be one of those areas for the elementary schools to look at. And this may be one of those areas for your staff to think creatively. I know that there's a move to look at some non-traditional school sites. And having one or two more independent pre-K level Montessori-type school sites may be something to look at. I understand the funding mechanism is different for pre-K four. It's not the MFP. So that may be one of those areas for your staff to explore and to think creatively about because I think that we can come up with a system to provide pre-K services, but maybe not at our existing elementary school locations. And that may be where we begin reducing the size of some of those programs. And they can still be, for example, a pre-K four Montessori French immersion program that will feed into our other French immersion program. So if you can just have your staff kinda open their minds, think creatively, think outside the box, and maybe that's the direction we can move.
Alright, so on this issue, I'm not gonna call for a vote, but Dr. Aguilar, I'd ask that for our next committee meeting, that you get with your directors and principals and with the, I mean, as you said, some of your, some of your programs are, have too many students, some have too few, so just work with them. Come back to the board with some recommendations. And, you know, if it's coming from you, then it's gotta be what it's supposed to be, right?
Let's hope so.
Alright, so the next thing, Ozzy, is if you could talk about the entry criteria and the enrollment expectations? I think they're related enough to where you can talk about both topics at the same time.
I'm sorry.
Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, sure. Okay, the entry criterias and the enrollment expectations. So what we've talked about before is we have certain academies that have entry criterias and we have some that don't. So we wanna streamline them and make them consistent across the board for the entry criterias. And the same with the enrollment expectations. So for example, if STEM requires a B or a C in math or science, then why doesn't Legal Studies Academy at Northside High require a C or higher? So the streamlining of entry criterias for all academies according to grade level is as follows. You have, I'll go through the middle and high school, and then of course for elementary school, it's, it's not as, it's, there's not that many for elementary. So for entry criteria for middle and high school, C or higher in four core classes, C-plus or higher in academy-specific electives. For example, if a student is coming from J. Wallace James and wants to go to LJ Alamo and they've been there for five years and they're in fifth grade going into sixth grade, then they should have a higher grade level in their arts academy elective going into LJ Alamo. Conduct grade of C-plus or higher for third and sixth grade entry. In sixth grade entry, you can, in elementary school, they do give a conduct grade, so sixth grade entry, they can have a conduct grade there. Streamlining informational sessions for every single academy so that there's true transparency from day one about what the parents should expect from the academy, from the experience, from the program, from their students. Statement of intent for grade levels, simple statements submitted by parent for elementary education, I mean, for elementary entry. So if a parent wants to get, you know, we talked about this before, in elementary, there's really no auditions or nothing else you can really do. So at least at the, the basic level, a parent needs to write two sentences and say, "This is why I really think my child would do well at LEO Judis or at J. Wallace James or at Prairie French immersion." Because that also creates an envi, that culture of the parent has investment in the program as well. It's not just, "I can just apply to this program to get my child to go somewhere else through a lottery system." For middle school students and high school students, a statement of, a statement submitted by the students handwritten and an affidavit of understanding by parents for middle entry. An affidavit could just be a checkbox on the application. The, the reason why I, I am proposing that the students handwrite those and upload those into the application is because I've seen it with my own eyes where a parent comes in, uses our Schools of Choice Academy monitor and writes the essay for the student. So I'd like that to be prevented because I'd like to see what students really want out of the program. Statements signed by parents of understanding and agreement that parents are responsible for transportation to and from the academy sites. If their child is out of zone, LPSS may, at its option, provide transportation from those satellite stops. And then the criterias, of course, there's additional criterias that apply to specific programs. So arts would have auditions and portfolios. Several of the schools in the, if you look at the handbook, it has it detailed out which schools wanna have informational interviews, which ones want to have letters of recommendation. And then streamlining the enrollment expectations, maintaining that C, C idea, C-plus or higher in all four core classes and maintain a B or higher in the core academy classes. So if a student comes in with a C, then they're coming into this great program that's supposed to be so awesome with awesome teachers and awesome programming, then they should be able to take those grades and move them from a C to a B. So the expectation is for that student to show interest and investment and to work hard and to, to keep, to maintain that status of being an academy student. Adhere to LPSS attendance policies and discipline policies. Then there's academy-specific program policies and protocols, lab protocols, internship protocols, JROTC protocols. And then adhere to participation requirements. Several of the academy directors have told me that one of their frustrations is when a student gets into the program and they have a rehearsal or a function, the student opts for the sports event or the football practice or something else. So there needs to be complete transparency for the children to, the students to understand that if they want to voluntarily choose to go to another school for a program or if they're at their home zone school but wanna be part of that program, then they're invested in that program and immersed in that program experience, which includes these functions after school. And then we get to the exclusions for the language immersion academies. And all of these are outlined in detail in the administrative rule and the handbook.
Sorry, so we're not talking about the language immersion yet?
Okay.
Okay, so that's next. So I have no, I don't think I have any comment at this point on these, these issues. Mr. Bruce Art or Ms. Morris? Alright, so, go ahead.
I don't know, what, what concerns me, I, I try to encourage every student to be involved with everything on the school campus. And it, it just struck me in one of them that's, that's, that op-out to go to football practices, basketball practices or whatever other, other than playing the cello. I think it balances off, but if you play the violin and you're a football player and you win honor classes, you are gifted student. So to punish that student, that's just one of them, just in that.
I a hundred percent agree.
Just to punish that student because he's multi-talented, I, I think it should be up to the teacher or the principal or...
And I, I agree with Mr. Bruce Art on that. I, I think, and maybe you do specify it in the handbook.
I do. It's specified that a student has to give advanced notice or work it out with that teacher or academy director if they're gonna miss something. But I'll give you an example. Last year, we had a, we had a student that had a master class and it was one of their final upper-level classes and they had been in this academy. They'd been there from elementary, middle, and then ended up in high school. And it was like the, the day of the event or the day before, they opted to go to some other function as opposed to letting the instructor know and the instructor was left without, with one less person that he needed for this event. So it's, if you look at the administrative rule and the manual, the handbook that you have, it very clearly states that. And I've talked to several of the academy directors and the principals when I talked about this rule. Two of them are not here at the moment to speak to it, but it was really based on their conversations that this even came up because it was one of their frustrations. So it is definitely, I agree a hundred percent with all of you, but there is some way to manage that. It just makes it a transparent, you know, when you're committed to these programs, this is what we expect you to do. So if you can't make it, let us know at least two or three weeks in advance. And I know that the Business Academy at Acadia High, Stephanie Bennett programs all of her stuff around football season, around sports. She works with the coaches all the time to make sure that her functions don't fall at the same time as the sports functions.
Alright, I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend to the full board to accept the entry criteria and enrollment expectations. And Mr. Bruce Art seconds, and I'm gonna open that up to public comment if anyone here has any comments on the entry or enrollment expectations. Alright, call for the vote. I'll start on this side, Ms. Morris? I mean, yes? Alright, yeses, we are making that recommendation, alright. So the next thing will be the language immersion, other exclusions for language immersion?
So in, in research and discussions, one of the things that we recognize is, is occurring is that non-English-speaking students are going into the language immersion program. And this causes some concerns. We actually have Ms. Janie Ellison here too, if you have any questions about ESL. But one of the things that we're looking at is the students are supposed to, by federal law, are supposed to go through a screening process with the ESL department. And the ESL department, the way it works now is they give them a recommendation and say, "You are recommended to be in this, this, and this class to help you with your English proficiency." Or you can go into a regular instructional setting. Currently, the, the, the third option is you can go into, you can opt into... Currently, the, the, the third option is you can go into, you can opt into language immersion. I don't think that that's, um, wise for a lot of the students. We have students in some cases, not all, not a lot of the students, but every now and then, at least once a year, twice a year, we have students that are removed from the immersion program by the parent, or the teacher, or the principal, because the student is lacking in English proficiency. Because they go from speaking that language all day long, to speaking that language, that same language all day long at home, and they have no English to balance that out. So, they end up failing, or they struggle, and so they end up having to be removed from that experience and go into ESL. So, one of the things that I'm proposing is that, and do it backwards. So, if a student does not have English language proficiency, perhaps maybe do two years of ESL, and then, the language immersion policy currently is that your point of entry is at pre-K, of course, or K, or first grade. The rest of it is, point of entry at any moment in time through a proficiency exam. So, if a student comes in from another country, and they are proficient in Spanish, for example, and you put them in ESL for the first two years of their experience, when they want to get in at third grade, they're still proficient enough to be able to place into immersion. So, it's really not going to block them or prevent them from getting in, um, but it'll at least give them those tools that they need at the first two, two years of their life to learn the English enough to be able to manage later on. So, that's the first part of that. Freezing the pathway to Lafayette High immersion, um, immersion students will attend their high school, zone high school, and they'll be able to take and earn credits for advanced language courses through technology, through, through means of technology, online courses or, um, um, programs. And then to freeze new enrollment, and this goes back to some of the enrollment conversations we were having, so you might want to, maybe, we might pause this for later, but, if we freeze enrollment, new enrollment for just one year, at Prairie Evangelion and Boucher, well, Boucher's a little bit different, but Prairie and Evangelion, um, it allows us one year to be able to manage it and see, maybe we need to move it somewhere else, or maybe we need to change the overall enrollment, but it won't, it won't, um, it won't create a situation where we're losing teachers or anybody else, because those teachers will still be going. We still have pre-K going to kindergarten, kindergarten going to first grade, so if, it just buys us one year to really evaluate how we're doing our French immersion, and then see, and then we can reevaluate it next year to see what we do about opening it up again.
All right, Ms. Morris?
Okay, um, so, on the prohibiting native language speakers from enrolling in the immersion programs, um, I do know that there are some federal regulations that are relevant to the ESL, and assessment of the ESL students that may affect whether or not they're allowed to be enrolled without being assessed first through ESL, so we have requested a legal opinion on whether or not we can waive that federal requirement or not, and so we'll have to wait and see what that legal opinion says. On the Lafayette High School matter, um, the immersion program at Lafayette High School is very small, I've been told many times that basically the kids get to ninth or 10th grade, they test out, they get their college credit for French III or French IV, and then they're done. Um, so, just as SLCC provides nursing courses and other courses to students who live in Eunice and Thibodeau and wherever else SLCC goes, we can provide the same services here, and probably not just with immersion, but with multiple electives. Um, I know some high schools provide a lot more electives than other schools, and so, the beauty of technology is that we could have a high school student sitting at every single high school, participating in that class, and being able to interact with the teacher while the class is going on, and that's what the colleges do. So, I think that this actually gives the opportunity for even more high schoolers to take advanced language classes and to get their college credit, um, for those, whether they've been immersion students or not, so I think it's an opportunity to actually expand the program to all the high schools with better use of available technology.
Mr. Bruce Hart, do you have anything on these?
I'm, I'm just studying over freezing the, uh, immersion academics at, at the schools. I, I don't know why we'd freeze them, and, and why should we freeze them when we wouldn't know by, by the program, if they're successful, or if we need to make changes or not. Freezing them, I don't agree with freezing them at this moment for the 18th and 19th school year. We can always measure success by the product we produce.
The freezing, so essentially, so what would happen is, in November, or whatever date we choose in the next couple of months to open up these applications, pre-K entry and K entry only for Evangelion and Prairie would not open for just one year. They wouldn't lose any teachers for it, because you'd still have students existing that need to move up, um, and it would buy a year to figure out how to manage the capacity at Prairie, and the capacity at Evangelion. One of the other things that we're realizing and recognizing is that we have students that are close to Evangelion, living close to Evangelion Elementary School, but they're applying to Prairie French Immersion, when Evangelion has a French immersion. There's a lot that's never been done to evaluate and look at how French immersion operates, and we have three schools that have French immersion. So, one of the ideas, instead of, and this goes back to enrollment, there's so many things that you can kind of adjust here and there to organically reduce enrollment enough to be manageable, to have a more, um, a, a deeper conversation about all the other complexities involved with that. So, to freeze it one year wouldn't affect the program that much for two schools, but again, it's.
Right, and this gets back kind of to the issue of perhaps the pre-K admissions, like, if you freeze next year and don't allow pre-K admissions, the pre-K kids that are there this year would move up to kindergarten, um, and it does give us an opportunity to look at space, um, alternatives, again, like the maybe freestanding pre-K locations, perhaps, um, and things like that, so.
Because if you don't, and then you have a solution somewhere else, now you're still required to grandfather the students that are still there, and it goes back to the conversation of, where do I, what do we do with the students that are here now? Do we remove them and take them out? So, it, it buys a year to really look at everything, and with all the interest in it, and all the students that we have, it wouldn't hurt the, if you look at the bigger picture of things and emotionally remove, I, I say this to everyone, if you look at the bigger picture and look at the ultimate goal, the ultimate goal is to make the program successful, to make it, um, accessible to everyone, and to not put a strain on structure and facilities, not to put a strain on, you know, other responsibilities of operational costs, transportation costs, everything together, but if you, if you give yourself a year to really look at everything, then you can organize it a little bit better for the future and figure out what you're going to do.
Yes, Pam, yeah, go ahead.
So, what, what I really have, the question, my, my big question is, why the schools of choice are sort of selected for these reductions, when the schools of choice are the most successful? So, to me, your question earlier about, well, how can we get people at these other schools? Well, the thing that works with schools of choice is, it becomes a superordinate thing that everyone in the whole school is working for, that's why siblings work, that's why siblings help the school. But the idea about the, having the students, um, I don't know, about freezing them, well, it might not affect the program, it'll affect the children. Like, you have people who are going to be wanting to put their kids into immersion, and then they can't? I just, to me, why would you do that? Like, you have a popular program that works really well, that people love, that students do great in, and, and that's the program you're going to freeze? It would, it would still, I mean, you'd still have then, the only ones that can get in into first grade, so those kindergartners that wanted to get into kindergarten are then going to be first graders, and the only ones getting to first grade are going to be the ones where they have availability, and there's not much availability in first grade. So, you're, so you have some students who aren't going to get in. The freezing at Lafayette High, again, I'm not so sure, Lafayette High is one of the only schools in the United States that offers immersion in math and science, right? It's one of the only schools in the United States, and, and I like your idea, in fact, I just wrote a grant last year to do dual enrollment with French immersion to the other schools at other places, but I, I feel like affecting the kids before we have a plan is doing it backwards. I feel like we should have a plan, and then we'll affect the kids, saying, "No, you don't get this, we're going to stop this," so that we can sit back and think about it, does not seem like to be the right order of things that they, that should go. I feel like we should think about it, and then.
We wouldn't be depriving anybody, we'd actually be offering the immersion French, um, math class to all the high schools, and not just one, right? I mean, I think it can be done.
Yeah, as far as I understand the Lafayette High, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we would still have that experience at Lafayette.
Because she had just said languages, she had just said, like, upper-level languages, she had never mentioned math, science, social studies, the world geographies, all of those courses would be offered?
Right, because that was just an exemplar during the discussion.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, our understanding is, there really aren't that many people, kids enrolled, and by 10th grade, I mean, there's very few in 11th and 12th grade at Lafayette High School, right? I mean, they've completed and tested out of everything, so, um.
They test out, and they get busy.
But setting up the, and I don't know what the technology's called, but we know SLCC is very successful in using these interactive classrooms.
Like teleconferencing type of things?
Right, teleconferencing, distance learning.
Is it synchronous or asynchronous? Because the scheduling then is going to be.
Well, right, scheduling is something that we can, we can work that out. That's not our job on the board, that's staff, but.
Right.
It gives more opportunity to the kids going to Southside, or to Como, or to Northside to participate, so if they've gone through an immersion program at Evangelion, and then Paul Bro, then they can go to their home school and participate, and still be able to take their college credit courses, and get their college credit in French III or French IV, or French Math, I don't know what kind of college credit courses there is for French Math, I don't know, but.
And the gifted, because the ones who won't go to Lafayette High for gifted, there's a lot of them who have dual gifted and French immersion.
Right.
They'd still be able to get both?
Right, so if you're in gifted and decide to go to Acadiana High School, then you would be able to participate in the technology.
And in fact, you all can do more dual, dual enrollment with y'all than that.
Right, and whether it's dual enrollment or immersion, that's a, that's something that your department can, uh, present later, but I think that, at the high school level, the technology provides more opportunity to grow the program.
Is the technology already in schools?
Uh, we have something, but I think it would, the, I know, uh, staff is looking at different technologies or software.
So, I've been waiting to have a conversation with LaShawna Dickerson, you know, lots of schools use distance learning technology to deliver instruction. It's one of the things that, um, it makes sense in, in some situations that we do not have a certified teacher, a specialized teacher at every school, every campus. If we could align the schedule for stu, for students and provide the instruction, it could be one way to deliver the required instruction at a very cost-effective mechanism.
And I want to make sure I understand, you're talking about having, so, basically, the instructors and the, the program will stay within the, at Lafayette High?
So, let, as an example, a teacher at Lafayette High would be teaching a calculus class, and if we did not have a calculus-qualified mathematics teacher at Early College Academy, as an example, that in that classroom at ECA, we would deliver that online instruction. What makes it very powerful is when the students can communicate with the instructor at the base site. We're going to look at trying to make that available in the district.
And, but specifically, this is talking about the Lafayette High, so, basically eliminating a, uh, school of choice for Lafayette High immersion, but retaining the ability to teach at Lafayette High in those languages, and then opening it up to all high schools, but it, for any student attending any high school, but they're attending the Lafayette High class.
They'd, they'd.
Virtually.
They'd be receiving the instruction from the Lafayette High instructor virtually.
Which eliminates the transportation issue to get the student to Lafayette High?
It would.
All right, and the, the last thing was about the, um, the ESL students going into immersion. I like the idea about being able to fill in immersion, so if we have attrition in immersion, and if there's an ESL student that wants to get in, I really like that idea. Um, I think that the one-way immersion would work, but we would need to get them ESL-certified. And I think that's the piece that we're missing, so, in the research that's been done on ESL students in one-way immersion, it has shown to be very effective, but all of the ELA teachers in those schools that are studied, it's exemplary schools, they are ESL-certified. I'm just throwing that out there, because we have five years of giving you free ESL certification with our grant, so, my thing is, if we can ESL-certify those ELA teachers, I think this would be a non-issue.
Right, and the more ESL we have, the better, but, um, yeah, we just want to make a hundred percent sure that we're complying with any federal law or regulation on that as well.
Hi, Christine Dewey, Director of Early Childhood. Um, I'm here to speak about a concern of freezing pre-K. First of all, if pre-K is frozen, those pre-K teachers in those classrooms will not have a, a position at those schools, because there won't be any students to actually take those places. Um, right now, in Lafayette Parish, we service, less than 50% of our kindergarten students are actually in our pre-K program, with approximately 46% of kids entering kindergarten not ready to learn. So, when we just, uh, decrease that number, we're actually moving in the opposite direction than, than what we're looking forward to. And the wishes of the board to expand our immersion programs, um, we just spent over $150,000 starting up six new classrooms for this current school year. That would be, those rooms would be closed, and those materials would just be sitting there, um, for spending of funds. The other thing is, although, uh, schools of choice teachers are paid through general fund, it is a blended funding for those classrooms. All other, all other costs comes out of grants that this, the Early Childhood Department applies for. So, to actually freeze the pre-K classes when we're showing the success, and the few classes that we did have, and now expanding it, I just asked Miss Hammack last week, St. Tammany Parish is coming in at the end of October, because they've heard the success of our immersion pre-K, and so, uh, the Assistant Superintendent and Director of Elementary Schools is coming to meet with Miss Hammack, myself, and, uh, Tia, um, and going in and visiting some of those classes. So, it would really be disheartening for us to take a step backwards when we just took a big step forward for the 17, 18th school year.
Dr. Aguilar, I have a question for you. You're going back to look at, uh, that recommendation regarding reduction of enrollment of academies?
That's, that's correct.
Do you think that you could factor into that the enrollment for Prairie Evangelion and Alice Boucher, um, where we, the, the recommendation here is to freeze new enrollment, but can you, can you add that to that analysis?
Yes, sir, we certainly can.
Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion that we, this committee recommends to the board that we accept the other exclusions for language immersion academies, with the exception of that third bullet, the freezing the new enrollment, and that we ask Doc, what I just asked Dr. Aguilar, was to, uh, take some time to study that with his directors and principals. So, the motion would be to accept the recommendation for the language immersion, um, regarding native language speakers, prohibiting them from enrollment, and then freezing the pathway at Lafayette High immersion, uh, for immersion students to attend their zoned high school. All right, we have a second by Ms. Morris, and I'll call, is there any more public comment on this? One more.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Brissette, I'm the principal at Myrtle Place, good evening. I just want to talk about those, uh, um, non-English speaker students, uh, because sometimes we have to consider that we have students moving in from another country for a year, or two, or three, depending on what the job is of their parents, and the choice of the parents is to make sure their child is going to continue learning at school in their first language, because they are going to be returning to their country at some point. Uh, I've seen it in the past at my previous school, I've seen it because we were a French-accredited school, we had lots of families moving in and out of Louisiana, uh, and because we had ELA teachers who were also certified as, uh, ELL teachers, within a year, they were proficient in English. I have never known, with five years of experience in, at that school, I've never known any student who failed because the child wasn't speaking English when he or she arrived. So, I wanted to mention that, that's something you want to keep in mind before making any, uh, any decision. And I, I would love to know, actually, how many, you mentioned that you know many principals who, uh, said that, um, they had students failing because of that, I would, I would love to know the number, um, to have a better understanding. I would, I would love to know the number to have a better understanding. And by freezing kindergarten or pre-K or kindergarten, let's just be compassionate and think for a few minutes about a parent, a mom, she's pregnant, just pregnant, thinking, I cannot wait for my child to be four, five, and I know we have a couple of moms here who, who have been through it. I cannot wait for my child to be born, be five-year-old and enter in the French or Spanish or Mandarin immersion program. And then here comes the time the child is ready and the parent finds out, that's it, we are gonna freeze that. That's it, that's what I wanted to mention. Thank you.
I think you make a good point, and maybe there needs to be a special waiver process for, for those situations. I think what we're trying to prevent is...
There are ways for that.
You know, we have, and we have our experts in this room, but we have English as a Second Language Program, right, which the intent, and please correct me, right, you guys know I'm part-time help, right? So we have the English as a Second Language Program, the, which the intent is to teach the students English, right, because it's their second language. So we want students that come into the program, for the most part, if they're speak native Spanish speakers, Chinese speakers, French speakers, to come in and afford them an opportunity to learn English. And then we have the immersion program that the intent is for, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, native English speakers to then learn in, to learn a foreign language by learning through the immersion process. So what I don't think we want is a native French speaker entering into the French immersion program on a permanent basis. I can understand a temporary basis, I think that's a, a great point and certainly something we need to consider, but we, we need to consider the intent of each program and to make sure, again, we're also, we're stewards of the taxpayers' money, we need to make sure that the intent of the program is, is being fulfilled. So that's the intent of, of this. Yes, Ms. Morris?
Well, and the only thing I'd say on the, the temporary is we still have to comply with federal law. So if the federal law and regulations require an ESL assessment even for those temporary kids, we have to comply, we don't get to choose. So whether there's a waiver or not, it's gonna depend on whether the federal law and regulations allow such a waiver. So that's not something that we are determining, that's set by federal law.
All right, so I'm gonna call for the vote, oh, yes, Ms. Samick.
Could I ask Ms. Ellison a question?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, Ms. Ellison, question, can a parent refuse ESL services?
They can.
What, what happens to a child who is a Spanish-speaking child whose only language in the household is Spanish and the parent refuses ESL services?
If, if the child lives in a zone where there is not a sheltered program, they will go to the school where they live. And the ESL department has an itinerant ESL teacher that will visit the school, work with the teachers, work with the counselors to help the children.
Even though the parents have refused ESL services?
That is exactly right, because the federal, federal guidelines say we must screen them and we must offer services if, if they qualify. The parents have a right to refuse. We are not released from the obligation of making sure that the children are still successful.
And if a child is zoned for Alice Boucher and refuses ESL services, can they go into the immersion program?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, as in, yes, that's what the current policy is, or yes, that's how it should be? I mean, I can tell you, my issue is, I have it in a spreadsheet here, the, every one of these programs costs us money, right, extra money. This isn't standard, every one of these programs costs us extra money. So if I'm going to spend the public's extra money on something, I wanna spend it for the right intent. Our job is to educate students and we have these programs to teach non-native English speakers English, and then we have these programs designated to speak English-speaking students a foreign language. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be spending, we shouldn't be putting native speakers in an immersion program. We just shouldn't. I mean, that's a waste of money. You can speak up there.
Okay, I'm a trans校 school improvement administrator and interim principal at Boucher, and I'm just gonna speak from the personal experience at Boucher. We actually have students that were in the same situation last year and they struggled academically because they spoke Engli, I mean, I'm sorry, Spanish. When they had to switch over to the reading ELA percentage of their day, they, they, they struggled. One of our fifth graders actually had to be retained. We tried to express to mother that he needed, that we thought he was in the wrong program for what his needs were. But they refused DSL, they did, but there was no support in the English portion of his day and that is an issue. Academically, from my experience, it's not best for students.
And you're, just to clarify, you're saying it's not best for students to put a native speaker in their same language immersion program?
My experience at Boucher is that it's not effective.
Because they're learning, they're learning in their native language, they're not learning English.
They're not learning, that's correct.
So they can't become proficient in English.
That's correct, yes.
And it's also not the intent of the program?
And it's not the intent of the program.
All right, if anybody here can tell me that I am incorrect and that the intent of the program's...
It's not the intent of the program.
I understand now, I understand that if I was in class trying to learn Spanish and my classmate spoke Spanish and I heard him speaking in his native language, I don't doubt that I would learn more, right?
Right.
And he's my buddy and we play recess together, I don't doubt that, but that's not the intent of the program.
No, and, and only 40% of the immersion program, 40% of their day is in English and 60% is in Spanish, so that child is not even getting exposed as often throughout the day to the English language, through peers, through all of those other things. So to become English proficient, he's not getting support in that. So at Boucher, and I, I know that there's research for anything, I can tell you just up close and personal, that even our Spanish immersion teachers come struggling and saying, this is not the program. They need more support in the English language and not instruction in Spanish.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will say, if people are struggling in language period across the board and they need more help, that's gonna cut into their immersion time, that's one of the few things that we say immersion might not be for them. So it might be case-specific, but overall, Thomas and Collier have done studies in Houston, in North Carolina, in New Mexico about bilingual students or students who are ESL students who go into programs and the best two programs for them are one-way immersion and two-way immersion. But in those programs, the ELA teacher was ESL certified, and I think that is a big issue. So if the child went through five years of immersion with zero ESL help, that would cause problem. So to me, if you wanna remedy this situation, it wouldn't be to tell the parents, no, it would be to get those teachers ESL certified, so that all of those years that he missed ESL, he would've had that and that would've helped that child. That, and if you're looking, I can, I can send you a raft of research on it. That's one of the reasons why the federal government this year gave grants only to immersion programs for the ESL professional development grants. So it's a very good program, Two Way Works Better, which we have now in parish, first in the state, which is awesome, but One Way is also the second best way for ESL students if you do it correctly, which means your ELA teacher has to have ESL certification.
And I just wanted to be clear that I don't endorse the ESL students go into immersion. My point is, parents can refuse ESL services. So that, that's just the point I wanted to make is we're saying that if they're ESL, they should be screened, I agree, but it doesn't mean that the parents accept the services.
And maybe they'll be less likely to refuse the service if they know they can't get into the immersion program. It's hard to predict. And I'm gonna call for the vote on this so we can move forward and try to end before the three-hour mark. So let me call for the vote on that. So the motion was basically to accept the language immersion and freeze pathways at Lafayette High immersion, and it's on the TV screen. So, Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So the next issue is administrative rule LPSS Magnet Academy. So are we, is this in, are you just kinda calling out this document? Is that what the intent of this one was? Well, this is the administrative rule.
Yes.
Okay.
So I just wanted to put down the bullets underneath it or just so you know what's in the administrative, the administrative rule document, but I mean, I can call it out if you want.
But isn't this agenda the whole?
Yes.
Right, okay, so...
So it includes application management, entry criteria, special needs applicants, language immersion priorities, invitation, enrollment, removal from academies, transportation, and application compliance. And then there's a couple of other things that I was asked to add in there to look at.
On this, the only thing I really wanna talk about on this is that, right now, we have an administrative rule and we have a handbook and...
So Mr. Kinesik, right now you have a draft administrative rule?
Correct, right.
Yes.
And a draft handbook. We have a draft and a draft.
That's correct.
Right? We don't have a policy, right?
Correct.
That says that you must and you must, right?
Correct.
We need that. So we need a policy saying that...
At a minimum, you need an administrative rule that drives the regulations.
Right, so we need a policy that says for, for whatever we're gonna call it, schools of choice, magnet academies, we need an administrative rule which also has a handbook.
In 2015, you stripped the schools of choice language out of a policy by recommendation from Forethought Consulting and Hammond and Sills. I don't know that you need a policy, but you definitely need the, we need a board to adopt at a minimum an administrative rule.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, is if, does the, does the board adopt the policy, a, does the board adopt the administrative rule and the handbook so that future revisions have to be approved by the board, or does the board approve a simple policy that says you have an administrative rule and a handbook that need to be approved by the board? I mean, either one, both?
I, I think what you need is an administrative rule and I would encourage you to approve annually the handbook.
Okay. Ms. Morris, on this, do you have any comment? All right. Right, I'll make sure we do that. On, so let's talk about, do you have anything else, Ozzy, on these two?
No, I think the, the next part, I don't know if we're gonna talk about right now or if we're gonna add that to that other conversation about the new academy options.
I think that'd be good to talk about at the, you said defer. Yeah, we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think we've done enough today. On, before we close out, on this admin rule, I think it's obvious, but we're gonna need a, an effective date and approved by date on each one once they're final. All right.
Mr. Kinesik, I, I'd like to just say publicly, during the meeting, we did move various documents into the public section in Board Docs. So if you go to our webpage, go to this meeting and click on this meeting date in the public content section, we're showing you the enrollment counts for all schools as well as the enrollment count for schools with no, no schools of choice academy. We're also showing you the administrative rule, the draft, and we're showing you the, the handbook that board members referenced this afternoon.
I don't know where Mr. Bruce Art went, but we're gonna go ahead and adjourn, but before we do, I just wanna recap. Today, we went over this, we voted on six different items, we chose not to vote on a few. We're, and those were recommendations to the full board. What we're gonna do is have one more committee meeting before the October, the next October meeting, which I think is the 11th? Next Wednesday, just to be clear. For this? So we'll schedule another workshop between now and then, or committee meeting, but I don't know when yet. And that'll be TBD, if anybody wants to attend that. And really, that's gonna be more of a recap, recap of this and we're gonna, at that point, it will have, the revised version will be, will have been published for 24 hours, so everybody can take a look at it. So we can vote as a committee then to recommend it to the board. And then, so you know, our intent is for the Wednesday meeting to have, to have a recommendation, recommendation from this committee to the board to accept whatever version of this at that point. So, and I'll be around or will be around after the meeting if you have any questions, and this meeting's adjourned.